This is now starting. All attendees are in listen only mode.
Ladies and gentlemen, I call this meeting of the city council to order. Please note that pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspended certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, as well as Mayor Curtis Tony's declaration of emergency dated back March 15th, 2020. This meeting of the city council will be conducted via remote participation. We will post an audio video recording, audio recording, transcript or other comprehensive record of these proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the city of Somerville website and local cable access government channels. Now please rise for a prayer and pledge allegiance.
Mr. President, let's begin this meeting with a prayer. God grant this city council the serenity to accept the things that cannot be changed, the courage to change the things that can be changed, and the wisdom to know the difference. And now let's join in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
This is roll call. Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Mbah.
Present.
Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Present.
Counselor Strezzo.
Here.
Counselor Niedergang.
Here.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor Ewan Campen. I have not recorded attendance for Counselor Ewan Campen. Counselor Rosetti.
Present.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Mr. President, ten counselors are present, one is absent. We have a quorum.
And Counselor Ewan Campen is not here because he just had a baby, so we have a good excuse from him. Do we have a moment of silence? I have Counselor Rosetti and then Counselor Ballantyne.
Mr. President, thank you. I do ask that this committee please remember this evening, Michael Foster passed away peacefully on December 9th. A lot of us know Michael, knew Michael, know his family. And for the community, I would like to let you know that Michael, he attended several Boston public schools before moving to Somerville, where he attended St. Catherine School prior to graduating from Somerville High School in 1972. He then went on to attend Fitchburg State College and graduated from Boston State College. Spent many years working in the motorcycle and automobile industry, was a longstanding member of the New England Truck Association, including serving on their board of directors. As we know him, he's a very active member in the community, co-founding, coaching the Somerville Boys Youth Basketball Program tradition, and also coaching numerous girls' Somerville Pride and Bay State Demons basketball teams. He was co-founder of the Alex Foster Foundation in memory of his son, in part hosting a monthly grief support group with Grasp. Husband to Maureen for 39 years. Son of the late Louise and Gerald Foster. Devoted father to Megan Foster, former school committee member, and her husband Jason of Somerville. Daniela Young, the teacher here in our Somerville Public School District, and her husband Matt. Emily Jean-Louise and her husband Claudel, and the late Alexander. He had many other members in his family and community who will miss him dearly. The family is asking in lieu of flowers, donations be made to Michael's memory to Casper. They will be, there will be a service at Doherty's and the information is up on that website for further information. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Klingon and White would like to sign on. Counselor Ballantyne?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to remember all those who have passed away for COVID in our community. The number has increased to 48. They were, you know, family members, daughters, sons, mothers, fathers, and our, our community members and neighbors. Thank you.
Counselor Niedergang would like to sign on to Mr. Foster. Anybody else? Is there any further moment of silence? Here and now, I would like to sign on to Michael Foster as well, and I do feel the need to say a few words because, you know, my father passed away when I was young and Mr. Foster, who lives at 40 Lexington Ave., would like to make sure that his family gets a letter from us. He lived right around the corner from us and was very much one of several surrogate fathers that my brother and I, my brothers and I had, looked out for us, looked out for a lot of the neighborhood kids who grew up, who grew up at the playground Lexington Park, right across the street from his house. His son, Alex, was a dear friend of all of ours, and when he passed away, not only did his father start the Alex Foster Foundation to help people recover from opiate abuse, but I like to think that we were his surrogate sons to not replace his son, but to be there when he needed people in his life. He was there for us. He was there for a lot of people, cared very much about youth, people outside of his own family, just making sure people were being taken care of. And I'm going to miss him most of all at the annual Wolftoons concert we would go to every year where we would celebrate Irish heritage and the rebel spirit that we all had. And sadly, the last Wolftoons concert was right before, right at the beginning of COVID, before we knew how dangerous it was, and he was not able to attend that because of his health. And it saddens me to know that his family would reserve a table for my family every year, and we're going to continue that tradition without him, but he will be greatly missed. And I see, I believe the entire council would like to sign on to this. So please rise for a moment of silence. Please be seated. Mr. Clerk, please read the next item.
Item number three is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 12.
All right, that item will be laid on the table for approval. And as is custom, I just want to make people aware that we'll be taking a couple items out of order. Item number 20 is with permission from the council. Item number 22, which is the report of the Confirmation of Appointments Committee. And then item number 29 is Executive Session. That will be taken up after our citations and grants of location. Do any other counselors wish to have anything taken out of order? Here and now, Mr. Clerk, please read the next item.
Item number four is a citation submitted by Counselor McLaughlin, Counselor Mbah, and the mayor commending Police Chief David Fallon on the auspicious occasion of his retirement after 25 years of dedicated service to the city in the police department.
Could we read the next item as well?
Certainly. Item number five is a citation submitted by Counselor McLaughlin, Mbah, and the mayor commending Deputy Police Chief Stephen Carabino on the auspicious occasion of his retirement after 28 years of dedicated service to the city in the police department.
I see Counselor Davis, Ballantyne, and Klingon would like to sign on to both citations. If I could speak really quick on this one, I guess this is, this is an emotional Lexington, oh, Mr. Mayor, you're here as well. Thank you for coming down. My, my thoughts are in my head right now, if you don't mind me going first, just because this is a real interesting emotional day for me because of the passing of Mike Foster and these two gentlemen up before us to connect back to Lexington Park where I got my political start. Mayor Joe, I remember you were there and other people were there as well. Back growing up in the city, of course, we all hung out at the neighborhood park, and as the city changed, there was tension between the young kids who grew up in the city and the newer residents. And I remember back then, and I've said this to people before, is, you know, growing up, I did not have a love for police. And I grew up fearing police, and one of the situations was at Lexington Park where, you know, people wanted these young kids to be kind of pushed aside, go somewhere else, that attitude, can't you go somewhere else? And there were incidences where police would come in and be rather aggressive and kind of push kids out. And one of those people who counted that was Deputy Chief Carabino, who I remember years ago came and he was the head of the anti-gang unit, so he was responsible for, you know, addressing gang issues. And he would come up to these kids and talk to them and talk to their parents and say, you're going down a wrong road. I understand that you're angry and frustrated, but you're going down a wrong road and you're only going to hurt yourself. And rather than slap the cuffs on them or rough them up or anything like that, he reasoned with them and tried to get them on the right path. And he has inspired a lot of people that I grew up with to improve their lives and to better themselves and get out of that rut that they were in. So I'm deeply appreciative of Captain Chief Carabino and Chief Fallon as well, who was a person I met numerous times before he ever became a chief, had numerous events. And you would say, you know, a lot of times, the city events where people would like, police are encouraged to show up, and some people show up out of a sense of obligation, but others show up because they really want to be there. And Chief Fallon was one of those people who just really wanted to be there, really wanted to look out for the youth in particular, for the minority community, for immigrants. And when he was, came up for appointment for chief of police, I couldn't think of anyone better, especially since the previous chiefs before him were all people who, they weren't from Somerville, which is not a slight, but they weren't from here. And they also left very quickly, a lot quicker than we would have hoped. And Chief Fallon was a great person, is a great person, who both is from Somerville, so we understood the uniqueness of the city, but also understood what being progressive policing is and what needed to change within the department. And I think he was the perfect person at the right time to become the chief of police. So we're, we're going to miss both these guys a lot. I hope you're both sticking around and staying in the community, but I really felt it was important to recognize you, and I hope we, we, I hope you stick around with us and continue to serve the community in other ways. I see a lot of comments. I, it looks like the entire board would like to sign on. I'd like to recognize the mayor, and then I have a few other counselors who would like to speak. So, Mr. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McLaughlin, for your, thank you to the council for allowing me to participate tonight, allowing me to sign on with you, these two citations for these two incredible public servants and to speak this evening. I'll be brief. I think you said it very well and eloquently, President McLaughlin, but let me first speak about Steve Carabino. Both of these gentlemen were two officers. I remember their appointments who came, came through the ranks, and you hit, they really embodied compassionate, progressive, community-based policing from the beginning. I learned a lot of lessons from them when I was on the Board of Alderman. They, they were part of, I'd submit of some credible officers in the department who wanted to change the culture. In 2000, I recall the Boston Globe, I think it was 2000, deemed the Somerville Police Department a house of hate, and it needed a major culture change. It couldn't, it didn't serve its residents. It only reacted to calls and basically, how it was described in more. There were two management studies, one which my administration did, and we really charged officers, the members of the department, to go into work and deal with us. Now, we're, we're in the midst of a, not only a national conversation, but the work we're taking on as a community and not just an administration, the council to reimagine policing, which is important work that needs to happen. We've gone through incredible gains over the last 20 years in the Somerville Police Department, albeit built upon as well, I'll gladly recognize as a, as an imperfect model of policing. But these two professionals did so much work to really set the tone to what policing should be. Chief Carabino, for those who don't know, is also a nurse and an attorney by education. I, like you said, President McLaughlin, he, he was present in, present in all aspects of the community, not just as a commander, but from the time he came in as a patrolman here. And as a, as a member of the force in the department, he brought a level of professionalism and innovation that was sorely lacking many years ago and was part of the long-winding change in the department to help, and really help us gain the trust and credibility with the community we serve. And as a commander, he was unfailing. And if he wasn't retiring, I'd venture to say he'd be a strong candidate to be the next chief here, here or any other department. I consider him a friend, a colleague, and someone who's exemplary in his work. Chief Fallon, as you mentioned, a personal story that anyone who knows Dave Fallon knows that's who he is. I'll recount a couple of stories. I remember becoming mayor and he, and I, I wanted to know for some of the officers what was going on in the department, what needed to be done. Even as a, as a patrolman, he stated really clear that we need to serve the community and not ourselves. I'll always remember that line. And I always remember also, when we were seeking, going through the police chief search last time, we heard from stakeholders in the community, Chief Fallon was formerly the East District Commander. And, and when the next person came in to take his place there, he took that superior officer on and said, let me tell you what we need to do in this job. And they went to every store owner, every business owner, every community organization, every event. He emphasized the need to know the community, get involved, know the kids in the neighborhood. They also did something really important. Chief Fallon and commanders like Steve Carabino working with our team, they changed the focus on how we measure success in policing. They understood that there is a consequential impact of community on crime, opportunity, health, all the other variables, social determinants, social determinants of health that have a consequential impact on whether or not someone enters the criminal justice system. So they started doing some different things. They started looking at arrests not as measurements of success, but as measurement of how much we're failing. They understood that we need, they needed to be problem solvers and deal with issues before they became crimes. That's why they did so much emphasis on training for mental health intervention and establishing the core program. So there'll be a lot more said, I'm sure, by all of you, and a lot will be written afterwards. I'm only disappointed that given COVID that this is one of many examples. We'd like to be in person to thank these two individuals. I can't thank them enough as a professional and someone who worked with them, setting such a great example and tone and working with all of us to make the community better, make the department better. There's no mistake and, and no accident that Chief Fallon was once recommended as a champion to change the former President Obama. These are both quality human beings and professionals, so I thank them for this service. And thank you, President McLaughlin, members of the council, for allowing me to speak and be here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a few people who'd like to speak, but I would like to, well, Counselor Mbah, I see your face, and since you signed on to this first, I'll let you speak, but we'd all love to hear from the officers as well. So Counselor Mbah.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is it, with your permission, like, it would be nice for them to, these officers, you know, like, to put their cameras on. We need to be seen there while we are sharing this emotion. You know, with your permission, can Chief Fallon and, and Chief Deputy, wonderful. Well, Chief Fallon. Don't tell me your camera doesn't work today. Look, you know, no, thank you, Mr. President, and I'm so happy, you know, like, to be here, you know, talking and seeing these two superior officers and their, all their work. First off, with Chief Fallon, I have to tell you, I was planning to ask you some tough questions tonight, but it's your retirement. You know, so my first encounter, you know, with you, Chief Fallon, as you remember, like, everything that everybody has said about you, but it's just, you know, part of what I'm about to also say, because I met you first on the street in summer, and every time I attended and I've been there, I always see you walking the street. You know, at the time, I actually thought that you were a patrol officer. You know, it was only a month later discovered that you were a captain. So this is what leadership looks like, you know, someone who is down to earth, open and accessible to people. That's who I've known you to be, even as a, just a regular citizen. And then as police chief, I was also now on the council, I worked with you on several issues, you know, especially since this pandemic started, I've seen your policing, how fair and equitable, you know, while reflecting our values as a community. You two are champions. We worked on so many, even look at going back to even how to enforce the mask policy that we implemented. But you're not the one for my restorative justice program chief, so keep that in mind. You know, we talked a lot about police accountability, you know, and we've implemented a lot of policies together. So I just, you know, want to say that Chief, you know, you two, you have committed to compassionate, community-based policing. And through all your leadership, I noticed that you are always willing to adapt and change. So I just want to thank innovative leadership and all you've done in our community, and I wish you a happy retirement. And for you, Chief Carabino, I've also heard a ton about you. I know we haven't had that privilege to work a lot together, but just everything that, you know, that President McLaughlin said, you know, with a couple other police officers that I've worked with, that I've interacted with, that, I mean, you are a champion for that police department, and I hope that whoever feels in your position will exemplify, you know, like, your, your, your passion for, you know, like, equity, you know, around the police department. So again, you know, with you two, I want to wish, you know, a happy retirement and thank you for your service to this community. President, for aligning their faces, because they were hiding behind this camera, like, you know.
I'm going to turn the floor over to Chief Fallon personally and Deputy Chief Carabino.
Yeah, so, Mr. President, and, and, Mr. Mayor, I'm just, I'm humbled by the remarks. I mean, I really appreciate your opportunity. I was giving back in 1998 to serve this community, and every day meant the world to me. The support of the council, the Board of Alderman first, and then the city council throughout the years, and the engagement only makes this city stronger. The mayor, you know, one of the, I retired from the military after 21 years. I can honestly say, Joe Curtitoni, the mayor is one of the best leaders I've ever encountered. He gives you the tools to do the job, but he holds you accountable and he demands the best. And I've always thought someone who deserves the best. So I'm humbled by the comments tonight, and I'm very, very appreciative of my, my chance to serve this community. Thank you very much.
And Deputy Chief Carabino.
I'd like to point out that the chief is out of uniform. All right.
I'm sure you sleep in that uniform.
I do. Thank you, President McLaughlin. Really, your, your words touched me and, and Mayor Curtis Tony and, and Counselor Mbah. I'm, I'm really touched. And I want to thank the council as a whole. I'd like to thank Mayor Capiwano for hiring me, Mayor Kelly Gaye for promoting me to sergeant, and Mayor Curtis Tony for so much more. He, he was, he always had confidence in my ability. He would give me jobs and I would think, there's no way I could do this. And, and he just, he thought I could. And so I thought, well, if he thinks I can do this. And, and the thought that comes to mind is, the police department actually took on about four feet of water in an hour, and it became a swimming pool, basically, and it was uninhabitable. And Mayor Curtis Tony came to me and said, I'd like you to lead the project to get this building back on its feet. And, and it was, it was a great experience, and my whole 25 years has passed in an instant. And I appreciate everything. I live in the city. I'm going to stay in the city. I'm going to miss people, and I just want to say thank you.
I have the comments. I have Counselor White and Counselor Strezzo. And Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief because a lot of been, has been said, but I'm going to date myself because I go back to when Chief Fallon was a young rookie doing detail work at the Star Market, and I was not even elected at that point, but we had the opportunity, you know, strike up conversation. So that's sort of when I got to know him. And I remember Deputy Carabino, because I had my office in Davis Square, him riding his bike as, as a patrol officer, is my recollection. So I've really had the opportunity to see both of these individuals really, I mean, like, mature and become real professionals who in my mind have both performed tremendous service to the folks in the city of Somerville. And I'm so happy that I've had the opportunity to work in, in government with the both of them, and I wish them both, you know, a tremendous future. Thank you.
We have Counselor Strezzo, Davis, and Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just really want to quickly say thank you, Deputy Carabino. Wish I would have had a chance to work with you a little bit more. I'm bummed you're retiring, but I know you're going to have a lovely time. And I definitely wanted to say something to Chief Fallon. Thank you. How are you? I wanted to thank you. Thank you so much. Back when I was a commissioner for the Women's Commission, I remember you always showed up to the fence, and you, especially a domestic violence vigil, you always took it seriously. And it meant the world to us. And I knew that you really cared and really served this community with commitment. And I've never forgotten that whenever I've had a chance and have needed any, had a question or concern, you always took it seriously. You always listened, and you always had thoughtful solutions. So thank you.
Thank you so much for those kind words. Much appreciated.
Counselor Davis and Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Fallon, Deputy Chief Carabino, congratulations. Just a real, real brief comment because I can't let this pass without really acknowledging how much I appreciate your professionalism, Deputy Chief Carabino. I think, I think we first met when I knocked in your door, back, back when, and I learned, I easily learned as much in that, that quick conversation on your doorstep than I, than I, than I think I had in, in, you know, all the conversations I'd had for the week, at least. I, I, you know, in my role here on the council and particularly as, as a legislator, and particularly given some of the committees that I sit on and chair, you know, we, we've had some, some adversarial conversations and, and much like conversations with the, with the executive branch. Sometimes that's just the nature of the, nature of the role. But I wanted to thank you for always bringing the professionalism that you brought. And, and I also want to acknowledge that for all the things that we're trying to do right now, and there's been so much talk about policing and everything, we wouldn't have any hope of accomplishing any of the kind of things we're talking about if not for the, the changes and, and the approach that you, that you both brought to the department. And that, that, that shouldn't go without acknowledging that, you know, Counselor McLaughlin's words were really touching. And, and it, you know, it, it, it really is important for folks to understand that we are, we are so far from starting from scratch on any of the stuff we've been talking about the last year. And, yeah, so many of the things, even though we've already have done, you know, you've already got policies that say that. And we're just saying, great, here's a law that also says the same thing. And that's the case. We're, we're going to do that tonight, in fact, assuming my colleagues will agree on the, the profiling ordinance. It pretty much just reflects what you all already have in the policies, and that is, that is not nothing. It's really important to, to me, and I appreciate it, I respect it, and I just wanted to thank you and wish you all the best. And as I said, Deputy Carabino, I'm sure I'll be seeing you around Davis Square once we can all actually see each other around again. Thank you.
We have Counselor Ballantyne and Klingon.
Good evening. Thank you. I, so, let's see, Chief Fallon, I, I guess I got to know you more when you came up for appointment for chief. And I think, you know, that search committee was certainly very thorough, but you stood out of the three candidates that were, you were the third candidate. You were the one that, that stood out. You certainly talked about your love of, of the community of Somerville, of community policing, developing a plan, using data, and you were just really setting a tone. And I will say that through those interview process, I learned a lot about the city of Somerville and also sort of the stark difference in policing in different communities because the other candidates had slightly different philosophies. So thank you, you know, for everything you've done. I very much appreciate it. I appreciate your accessibility to, to not only me, but also to the residents of Somerville. And Deputy Chief Carabino, we didn't work so much together, but one thing that I do know is that you were always around. And I think I noticed you first is because you were on your bicycle. And you, because of that, I saw you on the street. You weren't in a car. And for me anyways, that, that speaks volumes. And I learned a lot about the, the history in terms of your service to our city. So thank you for starting those hard conversations and making change happen along the way. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, counsel, so much.
Counselor Klingon and then Rosetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, for you. I'll be brief. I just, I want to thank both of you for your service to the city of Somerville. I actually especially Um, I, I actually especially liked what Counselor Davis said about, uh, how, you know, you wouldn't even be at the point we're at if it wasn't for your leadership. And just to have the two of you at the same time sort of setting the tone for the entire department. I think that you, you leave us a good, great legacy. Uh, you leave us in, in good shape here, uh, as a starting point. But, you know, it wouldn't have been possible without type of, uh, leadership that you have both, um, that you have both, uh, projected out into, uh, to the, to the, the other officers. And, you know, uh, just your willingness, both of you to, 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 to go in new directions to, you know, I mean, like, Chief, we, you know, we've been in meetings through the years about, um, you know, harm reduction and, and about the type of policing that we want, you know, not arresting people for, for, uh, for small amounts of, of drugs and, and just, you know, all the stuff that was, we were seeing in the media, like in Gloucester, we were doing it here. We were working, you know, we were working to get it done and you were like helping us champion this thing all along the way, uh, myself and Counselor McGlaughlin. So I, I, you know, I can't thank you enough for your willingness to, to, um, to, to change the culture, continue to change the culture the entire time that you, you know, you, you were on the police force. So, um, both you and, and Deputy Carrabino, uh, Deputy Chief Carrabino, I, I also echo the sentiments that, you know, you, you being sort of not afraid to be, uh, on the bike. You know, I know that I'm sure that, that wasn't always the most, you know, popular, uh, uh, mode of transportation around with, with the police. But, but I think you, uh, you, you definitely show that you can be, you know, you can do the job from a bike and there's nothing, there's no, you know, there's no, there's no, uh, uh, shame in that and, and a sense of like, you know, bicycle is just another mode of transportation. And, um, it's a much better way to get down, down with people and, uh, down on a street level. So, you know, these are the things that made, uh, our department different and, uh, and, and hopefully will continue to shape the department of the future as we all work together, um, to, to make those changes. But I just want to thank you both for, for setting the tone and being great examples and, and caring so much about this city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thanks, Counselor.
We have Counselor Rosetti.
Mr. President, through you, um, first to Deputy Chief Carrabino. Steve, I got to know you best during my term on school committee. And, um, you were such, um, a gem to me. And I, when I first got to know more about you, I was just wowed by your own education. So hearing the news that you had put in your papers for retirement floored me and, um, I don't see you ever stopping anything. So I look forward to seeing you in the community and what the future may bring for you because, um, you are one gentleman who has inspired me in my life and I, I would like for you to know that. And I wish you many years of good health and happiness as you move on to your next chapter. And to you, Chief, I want to thank you for the program that you brought into the Somerville Public Schools. Um, you know, I commended you many times for that and I still do to this day. And it's something that, um, I think will speak, um, so many trickle effects and volumes to so many students and families later on in their years. So you should remember that in your years of retirement and find peace with that. Uh, good health and long, uh, long retirement to you too, Chief. Thank you both.
Thank you, Counselor.
I have Counselor Scott.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Again, very similar to what Counselor Davis said, uh, but I just wanted to commend both of you on long service. It, it may be easy to forget, twenty-five years is a long time. A long time to serve this community, uh, to do basically anything. Um, I appreciate your dedication and I will say that also your bravery. Not, not only in the obvious course of your day-to-day activities, but also in confronting the conversations that we're all having as a community and as a society about the role of policing and about how we can better serve the, the communities that we live in, that we're a part of. So, uh, I really appreciate that of both of you. Um, and, you know, Chief Fallon, I, I gotta say, I hope on your way out the door, you, you give me, interim chief Minno's, uh, cell phone number because I'm gonna miss, uh, having somebody I can call to get the information on what's happening. So, uh, all jokes aside, thank you very much for your service and for your willingness to engage in those conversations. And, uh, congratulations on such a long-term service to the city of Somerville. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
All right, seeing no further comment, gentlemen, again, thank you very much for your service. And, um, you both live in the area, so I'm sure we're gonna keep seeing you and, uh, we're leaving the department uh, in a very positive place. So thank you very much. And Counselor Klingon, did you have a comment?
No, no, I just was, when I was saying bye, this was my face.
Thank you, Mr. President. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Uh, Mr. Clerk, if we could, uh, read the next item.
Mr. President, I have a number six. Is a public hearing, oops, there we go, public hearing on a citation on a public hearing on a grand location application submitted by TC Systems to install four hundred and fifty-six feet of conduit from an existing Frit manhole in Grand Union Boulevard to a proposed handhole in Revolution Drive, then continuing two more feet to an existing extinet handhole near five Middlesex Avenue.
And then now to clear this public hearing open, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on the item? Please use the hand icon. I see Adam Heller. I will mute you. And Adam, you have the floor.
Hi, this is Adam Heller from CNN Engineering Group representing TC Systems, um, for this grant allocation and also the next one. Um, and I think it was a great description of the project and I would be happy to take any questions.
If anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on the item, please use the hand icon. That's a little button that you press. You can go on once. Go in twice, one more chance for the hand icon. Uh, seeing no further comment, I declare this public hearing closed. Are, are there any questions from the council? Seeing no further comments, this item is laid on the table for approval.
Item number seven, yeah, item number seven is a public hearing, a grand location application submitted by TC Systems to install three hundred and twenty-four feet of conduit in Broadway and Marshall Street from an existing utility pole in Marshall Street to a proposed handhole in Broadway, then continuing five feet to an existing extinet handhole near three twenty-six, three twenty-eight Broadway.
And now to clear this public hearing open, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Adam?
Yep, again, Adam Heller from CNN Engineering Group representing TC Systems. And I'd be happy to take any questions about this item as well.
All right, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on the item? Please use the hand icon. Go on once. Go in twice. See no further comment, I declare this public hearing closed. Is there anyone, uh, on the council who has any questions? Hearing no questions, this item is laid on the table for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll go on to item number twenty-two.
Mr. President, item number twenty-two is a report of the Committee on Confirmation of Appointments and Personnel Matters, which met on December third.
Counselor Rosetti.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, before I begin the presentation, I would like to sever out one item to be taken up separately. Um, if that's the type of order you would like me to do, um, I will sever from this report, item two zero nine seven zero six for discussion after my report.
Uh, yes, I, I believe we will probably sever the item after the report, correct, Mr. Clerk? Or can she just sever it now?
I would suggest the item be severed after the report so that the report can discuss the entirety of the meeting and then the item be severed, the balance of the report accepted at that point.
Yes, okay, so Counselor Rosetti, please read the report and then we'll sever the item.
Will do, thank you for that clarification. So, uh, the members, uh, all members were present with the exception of Counselor Klingon. He could not be in two places at one time. He also serves on our Legislative Matters Committee and with important matters before them. Also that evening, he attended that meeting. Uh, from the city, we had from the Police Department Lieutenant Mitsakis, um, Director Sarah Lewis of OSPCD, Nancy, Director Nancy Solomon, uh, Rose and Pete, Rose Durham and Peter Foselis were our clerks. So item two zero nine seven zero six, which was a request of the confirmation of the appointment of Catherine Garavaglia as an alternate to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Ms. Garavaglia presented to the committee, uh, by Ms. Lewis, Director Lewis. She is a title attorney. Presently, there are two vacant alternate positions on the zoning board. Uh, we went into discussion with the director on that. And, uh, direct questioning to the candidate, Counselor Scott asked her about past appearances before other zoning boards. I will give a brief summation, I'm sure we'll go deeper into this later on, sir. Um, the report is on file also. Counselor Scott also posed various scenarios and asked the candidate to explain how she would deal with them. When asked about the importance of community input, the candidate stated that in the absence of a permissible code, e.g. by right, the concerns of the community should be considered thoroughly. Counselor Strezzo asked the candidate about displacement in Somerville. I, uh, made a statement to her that I was looking for individuals to serve who would listen to the people, not just someone who will push development for the sake of increasing the city's revenue stream. Director Lewis pointed out that many of the questions asked of the candidate this evening by the committee have more to do with the Planning Board rather than the Zoning Board of Appeals. Following further discussion, I then moved for approval of the appointment for a term to expire January twenty-one, twenty twenty-three. As side note, um, we all know that zoning board members have a five-year term, but alternate terms are only two years. Following that motion, uh, it was a split vote, two in favor, Rosetti and Ba, uh, two opposed, Scott and Strezzo. So the motion failed. Item two zero nine seven seven two requesting the confirmation of the appointment of Catherine Milton to the Commission for Persons with Disabilities. We learned that she's been a volunteer with this commission for some time. She is an attorney and has a passion for civil rights. Uh, the candidate is also fluent in Spanish. Falling line of questioning, she was unanimously approved. We then, um, took up the request of the confirmation of the appointment of Leon Gerton to the Commission for Persons with Disabilities. Counselor Scott commented that he is familiar with the candidate and some of the work he has done in this city and was very enthusiastic about the appointment. Following questioning of the candidate, he was unanimously approved. Moving on to, um, three constables, um, as you may recall, Mr. President, at our last meeting, um, there was some discussion on this. So we took up three different constables, items two, one zero nine four seven, nine four eight and nine four nine. All reappointments, Alan Bishop, Katello Batinelli and Mary Batinelli. Um, Lieutenant Mitsakis did report all the paperwork was in order as it related to background criminal checks. He found no problem with any of the candidates. Um, I, at the beginning of these, uh, the three of them, I referenced the letter that was, uh, received, uh, was sent to the state and to the constables. And I assured that they had received it from the city solicitor as it related to Somerville's ongoing eviction moratorium. Uh, we learned from the constables, they are still being asked to serve notices, um, by the landlords. And, um, they are also being sure to include packets to the tenants as, from the packet of the Office of Housing Stability, which reinforces who they should call in Somerville that Somerville does not enforce this. Uh, is the end of my report, but I did want to, um, well, I will, I, I, on further, um, I have an update to my colleagues on particularly the constables where I held conversation today. And I am going to be moving a motion after this report, Mr. President. I did want to present a motion and explain my reasoning for the motion as it relates to the, uh, moratorium, the eviction moratorium. I did have some questioning, but, um, I don't know if you'd like me to mention that now and we can include it into the report or keep it separate. I did send Mr. Long, I just want Mr. Long to know, I sent him an email about a half hour ago with the motion I'll be moving, so he'll have that language.
Are the people you're speaking about in this committee report or as a separate?
It relates to the services of the constable in the eviction moratorium.
Was it discussed in the committee?
No, it was not.
Okay, then maybe let's hold off on that, uh, and we can give a motion after the committee reports.
Okay, thank you, sir. So then I will submit my report as presented.
Okay, Counselor Rosetti moves to, uh, submit the committee report as accepted. However, uh, you do want to sever that other item now, right?
Yes, if, uh, okay, we will sever two zero, I asked that we sever two zero nine seven zero six.
All right, any discussion on severing the item?
Uh, Mr. President.
Counselor Ba.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, reading the committee report, I think they, they, they're correct.
Counselor Ba, is this on severing the item? Because we gotta get through that.
No, the committee report itself, they come, like, uh,
We'll get to that in a second. We'll get to that in a second. First, we have to sever the item from the committee report. Um, any discussion on severing the item? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll on that.
Here's a roll call vote on severing item two zero nine seven oh six from the balance of the, uh, Confirmation Appointments Committee report on that item, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Kempin. Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all ten counselors present have voted to, uh, approve severing their, the report. That report has been severed.
Okay, so on the committee report, not including the severed item, I have Counselor Ba and Counselor Davis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I guess when I read the, uh, the committee report, it says Counselor Mbah asks about bus lanes. You know, mischaracterization, I asked the candidate specifically how she, you know, about her experience in balancing different transportation modalities, which includes, you know, bus, bicycle, pedestrians, you know, in the design of streets and, and, and public. So that wasn't reflected, you know, unless, uh, just a one statement that talk about bustling. So I just wanted to incorporate that. That was the, I, I asked the question first, if it wasn't captured, they should always reach out to me so I can, you know, I, I put the question I asked and I want to see it reflected in the committee report.
Okay, so you would like to move to amend the committee report?
Yeah, to include the, the actual question I asked and the response of the candidate.
Okay, um, do you have that, Rick? Can you explain that in the motion?
Yeah, I, 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 I have the question I asked, but I don't, I remember what I asked, but I don't, I cannot, uh, uh, my recollection about her response, I cannot put that in, in, in perspective. But I asked about, it was during her introduction, she mentioned her interest in the different, you know, like, uh, how she loves, like, the bikes and, and bus in Somerville or something like that. Then I kind of like framed my question around that to get a comprehensive response. And somehow it, it, it kept, it was from the minutes.
Okay, what I would suggest, if you could make a motion, uh, let's make a motion on your question. So if you can reframe your question to include that in the committee report. And then Peter tells me that he can get the text from the video for the rest.
Wonderful. Yes, so the, uh, can I make enough, uh, Mr. Chair, because I remember what I asked.
Please do.
Yes, I asked the candidate, you know, to, you know, tell me about her experience, about her experience in balancing different transportation modalities, which includes the buses, the bustling that she talks about, bicycle, pedestrians in the design of streets and public spaces.
Okay, which candidate was this?
Uh, it was the first candidate.
Okay, Ca- Catherine Garavaglia. Uh, Mr. Clerk, do you have all that? Well, then that, that's not on this part of the committee, well, we can do it on the committee report. Let's just do it, okay?
Correct.
You have that? Okay, uh, on, uh, Counselor Ba's motion, any discussion? Seeing none, please call the motion on the amendment.
This is a roll call vote on amending the committee report to incorporate Counselor Mbah's question and the response on that item, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen. Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all ten counselors present have voted in favor of that motion, that motion, that amendment has been approved.
All right, so on the amended committee report, Counselor Davis.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly, I just wanted to thank the good chair for, for bringing the constables up before the committee, as I expressed at the last meeting, that these are important roles, and I'm very grateful that they were able to be for the committee, and then I will happily support the committee's recommendation. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion on the committee report? Hearing no further discussions, please call the roll up. Did I hear someone? So, everyone, please mute your phones if you're not talking. And Mr. Clerk, please call the roll on accepting the committee report.
There's a roll call vote on accepting the amended Confirmation Appointments and Personnel Matters Committee Report, accepting the severed item. On that, on that item, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen. Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all ten counselors present have voted in favor of that motion. The committee report has been accepted.
Okay, so now we have the severed item before us. We have the candidate as present and Mr. Proakas here, if anyone has any questions. But I hope everybody watched the committee interview. I thought it was incredibly thorough, so I would encourage people to only ask questions if it will sincerely and actually impact your decision today. I'm going to give everyone a chance to speak once. After everyone has had that opportunity, I'll allow a second comment, but I also strongly discourage that if it's not substantive and related to the decision before us. And I will turn it over first. I know Counselor Niedergang would like to speak first, so I will turn it over to him.
Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to speak first. I prepare, prepare a statement on Ms. Garavalia's application. I will be voting no on the appointment of Catherine Garavalia as an alternate to the zoning board of appeals, and I urge other counselors to do so as well. While Ms. Garavalia is knowledgeable about zoning and has related professional experience, she does not have what I consider to be the most important qualities for someone who serves on the zoning board of appeals in Somerville. What I think we should be looking for in candidates is how they will use their discretion and judgment in making decisions about development proposals when there are conflicts between what neighbors want and what developers want. Are they inclined to give the benefit of the doubt to the neighbors or to a developer? Will they look at the issues and the laws with a technical mindset or with an orientation towards justice and fairness? What are their values? Do they understand and share the values of our community? And have they been engaged and active in our city? Have they shown an interest and commitment to Somerville and the people who live here? Do they know the people who live here? It was clear that Ms. Garavalia had not done her homework and had not taken the time to attend any zoning board of appeal meetings and to try to understand what are the issues and the conflicts that come before that board, to understand what doing that job would actually be like. I'm not convinced that Ms. Garavalia realizes that zoning board members often face difficult decisions in which they have the legal discretion to side with the neighbors or with a developer. I do not feel confident that her inclination would be to support the neighbors rather than a developer. Nothing that she said, nothing in her resume or background makes me believe that she would, when legally allowable, favor the interests of the neighbors over that of a developer. What I heard is that she would look at the facts of the case. While the facts are often not completely clear and may be presented differently by the two sides as well as by the planning staff, I have seen no indication that Ms. Garavalia has been involved in anything in Somerville previously in any way. I think we can and should and must do better in terms of the people we appoint to important and powerful boards like the ZBA, the Planning Board, and the Redevelopment Authority. We have so many dedicated, talented, committed, engaged, knowledgeable, knowledgeable, smart, and well-informed people in Somerville. I know we can do better, and therefore I will be voting no. Thank you.
Do we have any further comments? Counselor Ballantyne, Counselor Klingon.
Counselor Ballantyne? Yeah, I'm sorry, it's just taking me a minute to, to bring up my, you can hear me. Sorry, I'm on the phone and video here. So, thank, you can hear me. Okay, great, thank you. And so, I want to thank Ms. Garavalia for coming this evening. I appreciate you putting yourself out there for our community. I also would like to say that recently this council appointed an attorney to the planning board. He had less lived experience in Somerville, had not attended planning board meetings, and has lived here for one year, was not fluent in the zoning code or our comprehensive plan. Again, recently, this council appointed a small developer with finance background to the planning board. He also had less Somerville community experience, was not fluent in the zoning code or our comprehensive plan. In both those cases, the council's comments were supported and that their other skills would be good for rounding out the planning board. I feel that is the case with Ms. Garavalia. Her professional skill set, her personal desire to give back to Somerville is what is needed on the zoning board of appeal. I watched the committee video, reviewed the job description, reviewed her resume. I've, oh, I've awarded, excuse me, I've awarded her the same consistency and deliberation as I have other candidates who've come before me. What I saw and heard from Ms. Garavalia in this recording was a candidate who wants to give back to a community she loves, who will abide by the zoning law, listen to our community, consult her fellow ZBA colleagues, because she understands that some projects or deliberation has a history, and she might not know it. So, she's open to learning more. She appears to have the strong critical thinking skills and knows how to read a zoning code, zoning code in ordinance. And she has the experience in the law, which was a special requirement in the job description for this. And, you know, I'm summarizing more in lay terms for me, but we, it appears to me, we have a professional who works in her day job to make sure that developers are accountable and follow the law and does the nitty-gritty work on behalf of her, her company. And now, in her night job, we're going to ask her to use those same skills with a legal lens that the city is looking for, because it's in the job description, which would also add a new skill set to the zoning board, because no one has this, this legal skill. And she would be working to adhere on behalf of our community and, and work for the best on behalf of our community. That's why I'm supporting her nomination. Thank you.
I have Counselor Klingon and Counselor Bah.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. So, I, I agree with a lot of what Counselor Ballantyne said. I, you know, I would have, if I had been there, I would have been the deciding vote, and I can tell you after watching the video, I would have voted yes in favor of. I heard a lot of the same things. I heard somebody who was committed to the city of Somerville, who's continually moved back here, and, you know, it sounds like she has lived here, then, you know, but likes the city a lot and continues to come back. But furthermore, what I heard is somebody who's more than capable of doing it. She was asked a lot of questions, a lot of detailed questions, and answered them very diligently and very thoughtfully. And one of the things that really stood out to me was the question, she mentioned a case in situ about a pool that would have broken code, but the family had a child with cerebral palsy, and, and I'm assuming that, that the outcome was that they were allowed to put the pool in. And I think that those are the type of cases where, you know, we need compassion, we need somebody who, who volunteers with the Chelsea Collaborative, who has that, you know, that experience, doing, doing things to help better the community. I think I, I saw a different person who was, who was interviewed, and so I will be supporting Ms. Garavalia. Thank you.
Counselor Bah?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Ballantyne and Counselor Klingon. You know, it's, was based on the same consideration that I, everything that you guys said that, you know, I, it also, it's just that it was a little bit unfair that even the question and the conversation that I had was never reflected in a minute. But I think, because she was really, you know, like, her resume was, you know, stellar. But after, you know, like, going down, since I asked the question the first time, and then following like the, the subsequent questioning, you know, I wasn't like all enthusiastic, but I thought she has value. And then reflecting again and seeing where the community is right now and seeing how much the, the current, you know, like zoning board is costing the city, you know, because if, if the zoning board was strong, I probably would have reconfirmed my vote, but just in retrospect, I'm looking at that board right now and just the emails and the animosity that it's really like, you know, that the city is, is we are at a critical point, you know, that I would rather prefer, you know, like to have it, it's like a much more community, activist, community-oriented, like somebody who has really like understand like the mechanics of where the city is at this juncture, you know, to be able to sit on that board. So, I'll be rescinding my, my, my vote, so I'll not be voting in support anymore. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Rosetti.
Mr. President, thank you. I stand by my vote of that evening. I, I listened to the line of questioning before as chair, I took the end questioning for her. And as I hope most of you reviewed the tape, you can see that I questioned her strongly on the voice, being the voice of the people. And because we would not be, if confirmed, we would not be approving a five-year term, a two-year term. And I let her know that I'd be watching these two years very closely for close consideration when she came back before this council in two years for assumed reappointment, if that's what the mayor so chose. She got it. I could see it. She got it. She understood that there was a strong passion about wanting the voice of the people. Katiana, Counselor Ballantyne, I want to thank you for your comments tonight, because they were spot on. I think I did say that also that evening, if I, maybe I was thinking it and I didn't, but this board is extremely important. And my term as council, there have been a couple of attorneys who served on the zoning board, citizens of our community, who, right now, and for a couple of, quite a few years now, there has not been an attorney, and there's a difference. You can see and feel the difference on that board without a member of, of a council, of an attorney of sorts being on this board. It is such a strong and important addition to this board. I stressed to her that I am looking for a zoning board that can control and run a meeting thoroughly, not having meetings go till midnight, one in the morning, as they have been, that, but the, the strongest thing, and she, you could see it in her body posture, she got it, she knew what we were looking for, is the voice of the people. And I have the faith and trust on my instinct in a line of questioning that evening and listening to the way she performed in her answers, that I don't think she's going to disappoint. So, I strongly and firmly stand behind my vote of yes.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm, I want to make a comment only because I think my vote will be, well, I didn't, I didn't commit to anyone how I was going to vote going in, because I was, you know, I had thoughts on, on either direction, but I am, I am very much compelled by the comments that Counselor Ballantyne made. I have, to Ms. Garavalia, you know, I, I, I agree with the comments that, that have been made, that it didn't seem that, that you were quite ready for the questions at this hearing, and I think that, I think that you looked nervous, and that's totally understandable. And while I, it would have been great if you had, you know, said, I've reviewed X number of, you know, zoning board of appeals meetings and watched them for, you know, these days, I can totally understand why that may have been fully the intent, but, you know, it didn't happen. Like, a lot of us have not been able to do things that we really knew that we wanted to and should do, but these, these days, the best life plans very rarely come to fruition. You know, I'm quite familiar with the role of a title insurance attorney, and I think that it will be, if, if Ms. Garavalia goes into this role and goes into it hearing the call from, from this council, and particularly as Counselor Rosetti said, as a, as a check, as a, as a check on developers and as someone who, you know, very likely will be able, once she's had a chance to dig into our zoning code specifically and get more familiar with it, very likely will, will know it better than, or at least as well as some of the developers. And I think that'll be an incredibly valuable person to have sitting there who can say, no, that's not what it says, it says this. And I, no knock on the folks who are on the, on the, the board now, I think there's some, there's some incredibly valuable input that, that comes out of those folks, but, you know, someone with this specific experience to me is, is qualified, is qualified for this role, full stop. And the concerns that I had after watching the interview, I still have them, but I, I'm, as I said, I'm very much compelled by Counselor Ballantyne's comments that we had faith in others along the same lines, and we ought to be intellectually consistent here, and, and that's, that is the correct answer. So, it's a two-year term. I look forward, if, if, if there are, if there are the votes here to, to approve this appointment, I look forward to seeing Ms. Garavalia bring that expertise to the board and really be able to, to be a, an expert voice on behalf of the, the community in, in questioning and holding, holding developers particularly to, to what the law says. And I think that'll be, that is the case, I would imagine, in two years, we'll be back here reaffirming without any questions. And that's, that's my, my thinking on this, Mr. President. Thank you.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll keep it brief. I'll simply say, I think my line of questioning in the committee, as this, as does the strenuous line of questioning that I've given to every appointee for the planning board and the ZBA over the last three years, speaks for itself. It's consistent with my practice, and I think I explained my rationale very clearly. I'll, I'll be standing by my vote, but as I said in the committee, regardless of the outcome of the vote, if, if this candidate is confirmed, I do have confidence that she will endeavor to serve and brings a great deal of relevant professional expertise. But my reasons, I won't reiterate them, they're on video. But I appreciate our discussion this evening, and we'll be standing by my vote. Thank you.
All right, any further comments? Counselor White?
Thank you, Mr. President. On the issue, I'll be.
On the issue, I'll be brief. You know, I did pay particular attention to the comments made by the counsel from Ward Seven. And if it's the individuals that I'm thinking of, I believe that I voted against both of those because one of the key elements for me is to evaluate a candidate's participation in the core of, you know, the suburb community or if not necessarily the suburb community, but the community at large that may be impacted by the position that the person is going to take. And I have no doubt that Ms. Garavalia is very competent. But again, I didn't see anything as far as community type of activities that would give me comfort at this point in time in casting a vote in favor. So that's why I'll be voting no. Thank you.
All right. If there's no further comments, the candidate would like to speak. Does anyone have any further comment before I turn it over to the candidate? And then I'd like to speak as well. I see no further comment. One second, Catherine, let me unmute you. You're unmuted on my end.
Hi, I've heard a lot of commentary about my commitment to the community and neighbors. And I think there's a lot on my resume that maybe isn't reflected based on it being my professional resume for the industry in which I work in now. And to just give you maybe a more comprehensive idea of my commitment to service to my community, I thought I would talk about just a few of my projects. Maybe you can get a better idea of me as a whole person and not simply a title insurance attorney, but also as your neighbor who lives in Somerville. One of my first jobs, not quite as an attorney, but as a certified student attorney was representing people who felt that they had been cheated or their money had been mismanaged by large brokerages and helping them get their retirement funds back, helping them get out of a 90 year old who had been put into a real estate investment trust that he couldn't get his money out for 20 years. I worked at a small law firm in Needham where we my employer was on the city public council list. And I worked with indigent clients helping represent them with a variety of criminal charges. I have worked with the Chelsea Collaborative, not as much as I would have liked to recently, largely due to COVID from being sick personally this year, from having my entire family be on the front lines fighting for everyone's lives this year. But the second that I was better, the way that I could help was to donate all of the food items that I had in my house to unload them to people who need them. And then once I have been cleared from my physical therapy to go back out on the streets to start helping people. Those are those are the ways that I have participated in my community. Right now, the best way I've been able to assist and to help has been to open my wallet and donate to Chelsea Collaborative. I've worked with MSPCC, helping to collect donations for prevention of violence against children and making sure that they have access to toys, homes and food sources. These are the things that I do separate from my professional work. But the zoning board, I think, requires a large fact based analysis. It is a judicial board, but that does not mean that we ignore the feelings and the needs of our neighbors. But we do have to weigh them out. And if somebody's complaining that they don't like a paint color, that's maybe not as important of a feeling that we need to pay attention to. So that when I say we need to examine the facts, that's what I'm talking about. But I just wanted to make sure you all had a better understanding. And yes, I have been in and out of Somerville for the last two years. And I haven't had a chance to participate directly in Somerville as much as I would like. I think a lot of us probably feel that way as we've been in our homes trying to do our best to social distance and keep COVID numbers down and keep people on the front lines like my family safe. I'm happy to answer any further questions about my professional abilities or commitment to volunteering or anything related to Somerville, if anybody has any.
Does anyone have any questions for the candidate? Counsel Rosetti.
Mr. President, through you to Ms. Garavaglia, I speak to you as chair of this committee and I want to thank you for being here this evening. As I said to you the evening before at the committee meeting, it's not easy interviewing at all, but it's even doubly not easy as my counselor colleague Davis said, that being in the eye of the public and now tonight, especially being again in the eye in the full board meeting. So I applaud you. I continue to applaud you and thank you for stepping up to the plate. Thank you for being here this evening and be safe.
Counsel Strazza and Counsel White.
You know, Mr. President, I'll let Counsel White speak and then if I may speak after. Thank you very much.
Okay. Counsel White.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm really glad the applicant was here because she really has assuaged the concerns that I raised earlier in my comments, so I'm going to be voting in favor of the confirmation. Thank you.
Counsel Strazza.
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. President. To our applicant, I my concerns were that you work for a large, the second largest corporation title insurance company in the nation. And I had concerns as our viewers can watch on the video that large corporations aren't exactly known for standing with the people and for an applicant to come into our community for a year and then claim to stand with the people. I that's just what I have to see here in Somerville, work in Somerville. That was my biggest concern. I if you are approved, I look forward to seeing your work and seeing what you're capable of. And this isn't about paint colors of homes. Again, as I stated earlier, this is about our neighbors and a lot of displacement and a lot of people being pushed out of their communities by reckless decisions. And we need to make sure that that's not happening in our community. And I stand for people for that. So I hope to be pleasantly surprised and wish you the best. Thank you very much.
Do we have any further comments before I speak and we call to a roll call vote? Counsel Clan.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, through you to the candidate. I caught something on the video that you said about in terms of the things you've done in the community. You walked through a neighbor through the code. Is that something that like have you are you pretty familiar with your neighbors? Because I think you're well looking for something hyper local where you know, you definitely engaged and volunteered in your community.
I'm I apologize. Could you clarify your question?
Yes. Yeah, so on the video I caught you had said that you walked, one of your neighbors had concerns and you walked through the code. And so you did that like work with them. Is that something that you have done before? And, you know, are you engaged with your neighbors around you?
Yeah, I am. We we've all kind of gotten quite a bit closer, especially since we've all been home. We chat distance over the fence, but no, I know my neighbors. And when people were concerned about the construction next door, they know to come and talk to me. The kids who hang out on the steps on Sherman Court right out front know to come hang if they have any legal questions, we chat. And I tell them that they're late for class. I mean.
Okay.
No.
Just wanted to get a little sense. Well, thank you for that. And.
Any further comments? All right, see no further comments. I'd like to speak on this real quick and I'll cut the suspense and say that I'm voting yes. And I want to thank everyone for their thoroughness on this, especially the confirmations appointment committee and the chair. I watched the video and read the resume and felt that it was a very thorough job as was has been expected for a long time. Catherine, so you know, just because you're you are fairly new to the community, a lot of this doesn't have anything to do with you and it has to do with past history of confirmations of decisions made on boards and committees. So I feel like that's where a lot of it is coming from. So please don't take it personally from anybody who would vote no. But I'm going to be voting yes. And my standard, I feel like a lot of counselors, their standard is, you know, give me a reason to say yes to this appointment. And that is fair. But however, for me, for a candidate who's willing to come and go through this process and be interviewed, my standard is maybe lower, I guess, in a different standard. And my standard is give me a reason to say no. And I didn't hear a reason to say no to this appointment. I think the candidate has the experience. She doesn't have any political connections that I know of because she's not hasn't been here that long, which in this case I feel can be a good thing. She doesn't have a paper trail of emails indicated she's opposed to everything that I believe in, like some past candidates. And I would say that this thing that, you know, not from here, not committed to the community. I apologize, there's no disrespect to anybody, but there's people in this room who haven't lived in the city more than a few years ago and therefore couldn't have been that involved in the community themselves. And now we're all incredibly active in the community and contributing to this community. I've lived here my entire life, so I could say 90% of the city is not as committed to the community as me if I were to go down that road. If I were mayor, I might have made another selection, an activist or something, but I am not the mayor. And we have a qualified candidate before us and I don't have a good reason to say no. I watched the interview and I thought Catherine showed that she has a knowledge of the zoning code. She has a background in law. And she said, what she said repeatedly when asked these very tough questions is the zoning code is law and anyone who wants an exemption for that better have a good reason. And I think that's a pretty good answer to that and that's what I expect. I would say we did get several emails to support rejecting this appointment. And they all seem to be revolved around the Cherry Street situation, which Catherine is not aware of. And again, 99% of the city, more than that, people in this room, very many, most people have no idea what we're talking about when we say Cherry Street. That means something to a very small group of people. And this has nothing to do with Cherry Street. She had nothing to do with that decision. And I really don't think it's fair for people to say reject this appointment because of something that happened with a candidate who has no knowledge of what happened. And then I would say, again, myself, I would love to have an activist in this seat and many seats, someone who I know personally is committed to affordable housing and issues like that. But we do not have this intense, deep pool of people eager to be alternates to the zoning board of appeals. And if anyone does have a candidate like that, if anyone has a candidate with extensive knowledge of zoning who also has never worked in the field, because that's a strike now and is an activist, please encourage them to apply because we do need volunteers like that willing to do the work necessary. We also need volunteers like Catherine, I believe. So if there's any further discussion, I will recall the roll. I'll give a last second. And no further comment. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
This is a roll call vote on item number 209706, appointing Catherine Garavaglia to the as an alternate to the zoning board of appeals. On that motion, Counsel Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
No.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counsel Valentine.
Yes.
Counsel Strazza.
No.
Counsel Niedergang.
No.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
No.
Counsel Ewan Kempin. Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, six counselors have voted in favor of the motion for or opposed. One is absent. That motion has been approved.
All right, thank you very much, Catherine, for attending and thank you to the staff for attending as well. Let's move on to the next item.
Mr. President, can we just let before before Catherine leaves, just let her know that she will have contact with Clerk Long about the formalities of this process.
Catherine, you have contact with Clerk Long about the formalities of this process. And Counsel Rosetti, you've got something else as well in regards to the committee report, right?
Yes, I did, sir. A couple of things. So the first I think I will reference on the constables. What came to mind as I was preparing the report for this evening, sir, is we questioned, we had great discussion with the constables about the eviction moratorium here in Somerville and their understanding of that. And the constable said to us, they are still getting the requests to serve these papers of eviction. And as I was getting prepared for tonight's meeting, I thought, why? If we have this moratorium in the city, why then are we allowing them to even serve the papers? So I made some calls. I actually spoke with a couple of our constables. I spoke with Assistant Solicitor Shapiro multiple times. There is a process and the process is that first the homeowner has to serve the notice to quit, which is served by a constable, but it doesn't necessarily have to be a constable here in Somerville. It can be a constable anywhere in our state. So if a constable, not the Somerville constables from Dedham comes and serves papers of notice to quit to the tenant, which is the first step of this eviction process, that outside constable has no clue about Somerville's laws. The last step on this process was that the in this case, it has to be a Somerville constable and only a Somerville constable that would serve the levying on the eviction would be served to the tenant by a Somerville constable. So my question to the Assistant City Solicitor was, why was this executive emergency order where we have this moratorium? Why is there not language where we are not even allowing that a Somerville constable would be allowed to deliver that notice of levying and eviction? So with that being said, I am moving the following motion. And Clerk Long, I have sent this to you in an email. I move now that the city solicitor advised this council, if an amendment to the mayor's emergency order establishing a moratorium on eviction enforcement is indicated as it relates to our constables not being allowed to deliver a notice of levying on eviction.
On the motion.
Mr.
Who's this?
This is Counsel Strazza.
Counsel Strazza.
Thank you. Can we elaborate on this a little bit?
Counsel Rosetti, can you read the motion again?
All right, hold on, let me get it. The motion is that the city solicitor advised this council, if an amendment to the mayor's emergency order establishing a moratorium on eviction enforcement is indicated as it relates to our constables not being allowed to deliver notice of levying on eviction. What it is saying through you, Mr. President, to Counsel Strazza, is that why are we allowing our own Somerville constables to even accept a job to deliver a notice of eviction? Is it within our legal rights to not even allow them to take such a job? And I'd like the city solicitor to investigate that and advise this council. If it's allowable, then an amendment is in order to the emergency stay right now that is in the books for our city on the evictions.
That's a good question. Through you to Counsel, Mr. President, through you to Counsel Rosetti. That's a good question, but the state's definitely going to. I'm just going to, yes, I imagine that it might relate to the state. Okay, we've addressed this in some capacity in the Housing and Community Development.
Mr. President, if I may just make one more statement, I had multiple conversations with Assistant Solicitor today. He also recommended I put in an order to have them investigate this for us and they will.
Counsel Strazza.
Yes, thank you.
I got Counsel White, Niedergang and Clan.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I have no problem with anyone ever seeking any opinions from the city solicitor. I'm just confused. When you say notice of eviction, is it the notice to quit? I'm just confused, when you say notice of eviction, is it the notice to quit through the chair? So is this something preventing even the, of a notice to quit?
If I may respond, Mr. President?
Please do.
Thank you. No, the notice to quit, the moratorium we have in place now does not reference the notice to quit, it only references the levying on the eviction.
Right, and through the chair, I thought they prevented from doing that.
It doesn't. So that's why we have our constables, not only delivering the eviction notice, but with that, are also delivering a packet from our Office of Housing Stability, so that the tenant is aware, even though they're getting these papers, they don't have to, and they're given the information of the Office of Housing Stability to call them immediately to understand their rights here in Somerville. But I can't wrap my head around why the constable is carrying that eviction notice when we have a moratorium here.
Okay, I'm, through the chair, I, I understand what the question is, I'm not gonna speak for the city solicitor, but I believe it's because it's the notice, and it's pursuant to a court order that's been issued. What the city is doing is preventing actually the levying of the execution, so the constable can't show up at the moving truck, and have the property of the, you know, of the tenant who's being evicted, put in the moving truck. But, but again, it's fine, let the, you know, let the city solicitor weigh in on it, so as long as everyone's concerns are assuaged, but I, I think that's what the difference is. Thank you, Mr. President.
I got Counselor Niedergang and Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate Counselor Rosetti bringing this, and I, I am in agreement with her, that it's worth looking into, can we prevent constables from serving eviction notices? But I'm confused, because as I understood the language of the motion, it seemed to be indicating the opposite. It's, it's difficult, of course, not being able to see it in writing and not be able to consider it beforehand, but through you, to Counselor Rosetti, could you just please read the motion again, so I can try to grasp exactly what it's saying, the language of it?
Sure. Yep. One second. Technology is failing me right now, excuse me, one minute. That the city solicitor advised this council, if an amendment to the mayor's emergency order is indicated, karma, as it relates to our constables not being allowed to deliver notice of levying on eviction.
Mr. President, can I, can I continue? So to me, I understood this to say that we want an amendment to allow our constables to deliver a notice of levying on eviction. If the word "not" were taken out, so that it said, as it relates to our constables being allowed to deliver notice of levying on eviction, that would make sense to me, as it reads now. It doesn't seem accurate, and it also seems to be implying the opposite of what the intent is. Perhaps I'm misunderstanding, but that's, that's the way it reads to me, so, you know, I'd like to, if the word "not" could be taken out, if that would, if that would be more accurate in terms of the intent than as it reads now.
Mr. President, I accept Counselor Niedergang's amendment, if you want to move the amendment to the motion first. As I said, I did this this afternoon, and that English language trick failed me sometimes, and I totally agree with him. I would, I would ask that he make that in the form of an amendment, and we move, we move the amendment.
To save time, why don't we withdraw the previous motion and introduce this motion?
I move that the city solicitor advised this council, if an amendment to the mayor's emergency order establishing a moratorium on eviction enforcement is indicated, as it relates to our constables being allowed to deliver notice of levying on eviction.
All right. Does that satisfy your Counselor Niedergang?
Yes, thank you very much, thank you, Counselor Rosetti.
Thank you, Counselor Niedergang.
And now I have Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President, just a couple comments, thank you to Counselor Rosetti for bringing this up. You know, I do, I do think there's a lot of different pieces to this, one being that my understanding is that even if the judge is granting evictions, they're not actually, like, sending them out for the constables to serve. Well, that's neither here nor there, I think it's important, the main concern for me is the fact that they can, an outside constable, outside of Somerville, could serve, but I believe a judge has to be asked by, you know, by the lawyer of the petitioner, for, for the, they have to be, they have to ask for a, if an outside constable can't come in here. And the reason why, you know, that's concerning is because, in my opinion, and I've talked with the constables as well, and, you know, I think any constable in their right mind knows that if they serve an eviction, and we can find that out pretty easily, that they will not be reappointed in the city of Somerville, and that's kind of what I've been getting at the last couple times that I brought this up, is that, you know, granted, okay, fine, we want to get something down, that's, that's, that's important, but, but, but any, anybody who's serving, and, and my understanding is that not serving evictions right now, by choice, because I think they know what that means. I, I can't speak for all of them, but the ones that I spoke to. So that's all I want to say on that, I do, but again, I think it's good to firm up the language, and I want to make sure that, you know, this, how we can address the outside constables coming in, and, and how often judges even grant those, those type of things, and, and, you know, kind of whether or not, maybe talk to Housing, Housing Stability about whether or not evictions are actually being handed out, served, like, like the judge is ruling, okay, get eviction, but then not setting, they're not setting them out like this, they're not evicting anybody at this moment. This is my understanding, but I, you know, again, this is what I've been told from people on the inside, but naturally, we want to, we want to firm all this up and make sure that people aren't being, being evicted during this moratorium, so thank you for bringing this up, Counselor Rosetti.
Any further discussion? Here are none, this item is laid on the table for approval.
Mr. President, I have two items to discharge out of committee, may I do that now?
Out of what, the committee report we already?
No, out of, out of the Committee of Confirmation of Appointments. I used, I use, you're keeping on table the more, the motion I just made for later on, correct?
Yes.
Okay. But I have, I had sent you communication and Clerk Long as well. At this time, I wish to discharge two items out of committee and move for approval. It's item two zero nine four zero seven, the reappointment of Darcy Haynes as constable, and item two zero nine seven seven three, the reappointment of Frank Santangelo as constable. In keeping with the new policy of this council, we interview these individuals every other year now. Both were interviewed in two thousand nineteen. I personally spoke with them on the telephone to be assured that they were aware of the moratorium, to understand the importance, and to be sure that they are delivering the packet from the Office of Housing Stability. They both assured me they are well aware and are, will do so. They will be personally meeting with Clerk John Long for the swearing in again. And the clerk will be giving them the actual paperwork and email as well, so they will have it for their files, as we did with the other three constables from the other evening. So I move for approval of these two constable reappointments this evening.
Okay, Counselor Rosetti moves for approval on two constable appointments, on that, Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'm not sure if it needs to be two motions, one to discharge and one to approve, but I'll leave that to the city clerk. I'd just like to commend the Chair of Confirmation Appointments for both following up on the biannual interview schedule for these constables, and for particularly personally following up in these grave times, to make sure that the constables were aware of the specific circumstances that we live in right now, as it relates to eviction notification assistance from the Office of Housing Stability. So thank you very much, I'll support this.
Any further discussion? Here are no further discussion. You're correct, Counselor Scott, we need a motion to discharge, which Counselor Rosetti made, any discussion on that? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll on discharge on the two items.
Mr. President, this is a roll call vote on discharging item number two zero nine four oh seven, which is a request of the mayor, request of the reappointment of Darcy Haynes as constable, and item number two zero nine seven seven three, which is a request of the mayor, request of the reappointment of Frank Santangelo as constable. On the motion to discharge those two items from the Committee on Confirmation of Appointments, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White. Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan. Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all ten councilors present have voted in favor of discharging those two items, those two items are now before this city council.
All right, so we have two items before us right now. If no one objects, we can do a roll call vote on both candidates at once, or I'll open it up to discussion on the candidates, any discussion?
Mr. President, Counselor Rosetti.
Counselor Rosetti.
I forgot to state that I also have assurances from Clerk Long, the papers are in order, that the police department did run both these individuals again during the month of November, to be sure that everything was still in order, and it is.
All right, any further discussion? Here are no discussion, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll on both items.
This is a roll call vote on the approval of those two constables. On that item, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan. Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Again, Mr. President, all ten councilors present have voted in favor of that motion, one is absent, those two appointments have been approved.
Okay, are we ready to move on? Here are no comment, Mr. Clerk, please call the next item, which should be the executive session.
Mr. President, this is a roll, I'm sorry, this is a request of the mayor, requesting that special counsel appear before this council in executive session to discuss litigation strategy with respect to nine to eleven Aldersey Street.
Okay, so this item is something that needs to be discussed in executive session, I would like the city solicitor representative to come forward and give an opinion on the need of executive session, do we have an attorney present? Ms. McGinnigan.
Thank you, President McLaughlin, yes, I would recommend that the council go into executive session to discuss litigation strategy with respect to the potential eminent domain taking of nine eleven Aldersey Street.
All right. Any discussion? Here are none, Counselor Klingon moves to enter into executive session, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
This is a roll call vote on moving to executive session to take up this item on nine to eleven Aldersey Street, on that motion, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan. Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all ten councilors present have voted to approve moving to executive session.
All right, this meeting will now be in recess for the purpose of moving into executive session, with the intention of reconvening in open session, following executive session. If anyone has a problem, enter in executive session, please contact Peter, and I'll see you all in executive session.
Mr. President, let me just take one minute to create that, to get that executive session up and running.
Okay, how about we take a five-minute recess then, it's about eight forty-five. At eight fifty, we'll reconvene in executive session.
All right, and now call this City Council back into open session, follow an executive session. No votes were taken in the executive session except for the vote to adjourn. When Mr. Clerk, let's move on to the next item. Oh, please, let's call a roll for a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is roll call to determine the presence of a quorum following the executive session. Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Mbah.
Present.
Counselor White. Counselor Ballantyne.
Here.
Counselor, Counselor Strezzo.
Here.
Counselor Niedergang. Counselor Niedergang. Counselor, I do not record that Counselor Niedergang is present. Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor Ewan Campen. Counselor Ewan Campen. I do not record that Counselor Ewan Campen is present. Counselor Rosetti.
Present.
And Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Mr. President, nine councilors are present, two are absent, we have a quorum.
Okay, next item.
Counselor Niedergang is here, Mr. President.
Are you here, Counselor Niedergang?
I am, thank you.
He is here. We're all here. And now let's get this.
Very good. Mr. President, returning to the regular order of business, we move to item number eight, which is a resolution submitted by Counselor Strezzo that this council opposes the planned reduction and/or elimination of bus routes in Somerville as it could damage the residents most in need of public transportation.
Counselor Strezzo.
Thank you. Star and ride, it says it right there in the resolution. I think we need to publicly state. There's an echo. Someone has an echo.
Anyone not speaking, please mute yourself.
Thank you. I think we need to publicly state how disastrous the proposed MBTA cuts in December of 2020 and beyond will be to the city and a lot of our Somerville residents who, who if are still taking public transportation and if bus lights are cut, could really damage their, not only their roots, their, their, their job ability, ability to get to their job and just general lives. And I think we should state this publicly, that's all. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
All right, Counselor Klingon and Scott would like to sign on, and Counselor Ballantyne is coming.
Yes, Mr. President. Through you, I would ask for a, and a friendly amendment to the, to the, or, to the resolution that it's identified that, insert the word MBTA, or the acronym MBTA, before the word bus. And then also, I would say I'd like an action on it. So I would ask that a copy of this is shared with the governor and the general manager of the T. And then if the counselor is supportive of those two friendly amendments, then I would like to sign on to it.
Thank you, Mr. President, may I respond?
Yes, on the motion.
Thank, thank you, on the motion, yes. I do support that, I do agree with it, and I would, I agree with all those changes and suggestions.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, do you have all that information?
Yes, I do, Mr. President.
Okay, on the motion, any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, please call the roll on the amendment.
On the amendment to add MBTA before bus routes and include that a copy be sent to the governor and the MBTA. Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes, please.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo. Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen. Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all ten councilors present, voted in favor of that amendment, that item is now amended.
Okay, so on the amended item, Counselor Davis would like to sign on. Any further comments? Here and none, this item was laid on the table for approval with the copy sent to the governor.
Mr. President.
Very good.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you. Director Weber just let me know that we have staff apparently present from Council on Aging to answer questions on some grants of no match required later in the meeting. This is literally thirty seconds ago, the first time I was informed of it, so I would respectfully request that we take those items out of order so that the staff can answer any questions folks have and we can go home.
Okay, I have no problem with that, and as we said at the last meeting, I prefer to take items for city staff out of order first. I could definitely use advance notice, but Counselor Scott moves to take items thirty-four and thirty-six out of order. Seeing no discussion.
Thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six.
Thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six. Mr. Clerk, seeing no discussion, please take those items out of order. Do you want them read one at a time or all at once?
I'm happy to read them all at once. I don't believe they're particularly controversial, but let's read them all at once, and if anybody has questions about them, we can take at the same time.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, please read the three items.
Item thirty-four is a question of the mayor requesting acceptance of a seventy-eight-hundred-and-sixteen-dollar grant with no new match required from several Cambridge Elder Services to the Council on Aging for the Senior Fit for Life Health and Wellness Program. Thirty-five is a question of the mayor requesting acceptance of a thirty-three-thousand-dollar grant with no new match required from that same Somerville Cambridge Elder Services to the Council on Aging for support of their transportation program. And item thirty-six is a question of the mayor requesting acceptance of an eight-hundred-dollar gift with no new match required from Tufts University to the Council on Aging to pay for eighty box lunches.
On the items.
Mr. Clerk, I've reviewed them, I see no problems with any of these, I think they're all laudable, and I appreciate Somerville Cambridge Elder Services and our Council on Aging work on this. I would approve tonight.
Counselor Scott moves for approval, any discussion? Here and none, let's call the roll on approval.
Is there a roll call vote on the approval of those three items just read? On that motion, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen. Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all ten councilors have voted in favor of those three items, one is absent. That item has been approved.
All right.
Those items have been approved.
Mr. President, thank you for your, thank you for your purbarance, and my, all apologies to Director Speliotis, we were not informed of your presence this evening, thank you.
Yes, thank you, and again, I always prefer to take city staff up after the public, of course. Anyone who doesn't want to stay here till the very end of the meeting is welcome to speak. Next item.
Returning to the regular order of business, we go to item number nine, which is an order submitted by Counselor Strezzo, the Director of Parking, discuss with the appropriate committee, implementing income-based parking ticket fines for residents as well as day fines scales to set ticket penalties according to an individual's daily income.
Counselor Strezzo.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. So I put forward this order to explore in the proper committee the concept that for many residents, especially in this year where unemployment rates are extremely high right now, and a lot of families are just barely trying to, barely making ends meet. The concept of what is called day fines, and they do this in Europe, and there are other cities throughout this country that do this. So essentially, when, when a parking ticket typically is granted, and this is for residents, we're talking Somerville residents only, that I am proposing this for. So when we get a ticket, it is, it could be, what, $50 or $100, which is fine for some of our higher earning residents making 150K a year or even 100,000. You write a check or you contest it, off it goes. But for residents where they may be making $50,000 a year or $40,000 a year, a $50 or $100 or $150 ticket sometimes is the difference between how much groceries can be bought or, or what expenses or utilities has, have to be adjusted for that month. So with that, the concept of a day fine would be that it is the amount of what a potential violator of a receiver of a parking ticket would, would get, would be, could potentially be adjusted based on their income. And the details on that, the finer details could be worked out later on that. But so, so recognized that, that someone who is making $50,000, it, it is a much larger struggle, struggle for them to pay a parking ticket to a hundred or $200,000 a year earner. This is in the idea of equity, and I would like to put this forward, thank you very much.
Any discussion? Here and none, this item was laid on the table for approval with the copy sent to Traffic and Parking.
Item number 10 is a resolution, is submitted by Counselor Strezzo, the Director of the Somerville Media Center, appear before this council's Committee on Housing and Community Development to consider out-of-school programming and funding to help address the lack of accessible childcare options during this pandemic.
Counselor Strezzo.
Thank you. So this order, I am asking to go to Housing and Community Development. We have a lot of families and parents and guardians that are approaching me and I'm sure any of my colleagues about out-of-school time, out of, excuse me, out of the hardship that, of, of the lack of, of, of out-of-school, the lack of services for, for children at this time. This is a concept that we need to be talking more about and having more action taken with, with out-of-school time and how we're going to fund this. I, I would love this discussed in my committee, thank you.
On this, Counsel Ballantyne.
Thank you, through you, Mr. President, to Counselor Strezzo. I just want to be clear, as I understand that the Somerville Media Center is currently doing some out-of-school time programming. Are you asking them to, and I'm not really sure because they're their own nonprofit, they're not the, the city, are you asking them to add on to their current programming?
Mr. President, may I address that? That's a good question, to, Mr. President, through you, to Counsel Ballantyne, it's a good question. I, I have been exploring the very myriad of, of out-of-school plans and researching what exactly that, the many directions that out-of-school time takes right now, currently, of course, in regular time, but now. And the issue I want to bring really attention to is, is focused on is funding. With the Somerville Media Center, yes, they're a community partner. It is not the only organization that I'd like to talk about, to talk with about this and have been exploring how that, exactly that discussion will look in the Housing and Community Development Committee and, and how the discussion would go. Yes, it's very complex, and it's more complex, I'm discovering. And definitely a lengthy conversation. So I guess I could best say yes and no, Counsel Ballantyne, and.
Okay, thank you. Just an added point, I do think that childcare is a very important topic. I appreciate the fact that the discussion is happening. I, so it sounds to me like the counselor wants to have these partner organizations meet with the committee to discuss it or convene or brainstorm to figure out some solutions. However, I think what I'm hearing is you have not had this discussion with, for example, the Summer, Somerville Media Center right now. So they don't know about this.
Yeah. Mr. President, through you to Counsel Ballantyne, now they are one of a few community partners that have, that are talking about it and had been, had been discussing it or mentioning it in, say, for instance, the Community Cabinet Meeting, which is the serving of the Somerville children from cradle to college. And the larger discussion has a lot to do with now that winter is coming and a lot of partners are going virtual. And a lot of organizations, childcare organizations are saying that, that isn't, is, is virtual the best solution? And is there funding for that? And should there be funding for that? And the various ways that we are approaching this pandemic and how childcare is, is being concerned. They want it to be for all of our childcare options. And I have been also in communication with Christopher Hausmann of Summer, Summer Promise about this as well. And this is a very complex issue, and the broader focus of this order is to make sure that the communication and the conversations are continuing on and action steps are hopefully not far behind because we, I don't feel. Okay, I can go on, thank you.
Any further discussion? Here and none, this item was laid on the table for approval with the copy sent to Housing and Community Development.
Item number 11 is an order submitted by Counselor Strezzo, that the Director of SBCD update this council's Committee on Housing and Community Development on the Encore Casino's efforts to support Somerville small businesses pursuant to their community agreement.
Counselor Strezzo.
Thank you. So in, in committee, in, in, one of the committees, Director Galgani spoke about how Wynn Casino is required to spend $10 million per year on Somerville businesses, and that he was pressing for information on that and if Wynn Casino was, was upholding their promise. And they were also required to, Wynn Casino was also required to purchase, purchase over $25,000 worth of gift cards to hand out to Wynn Casino patrons. So I am very curious to see if this is happening. If it is, we want the dialogue happen, to, to be, be occurring, and also, again, action steps. Our Somerville businesses need as much help as they can get and as much revenue as we can get. Is Wynn Casino following through on their promises? Let's find out.
All right, I'd like to sign on to this one since I can see the casino from my house. Any further discussion? Here and none, this item is laid on the table for approval and referred to Housing and Community Development.
Thank you.
Item number 12 is an order submitted by Counselor Ballantyne, that the Directors of Finance, Infrastructure and Asset Management, and Strategic Planning and Community Development provide a progress report for the Vision Zero Action Plan 2020 as outlined in the attached spreadsheet.
Counsel Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. President, I think it's pretty explanatory. There is a plan, there's an action plan, but we haven't heard which items the administration has completed or might be in progress on because of COVID. So again, I think it's pretty explanatory, and I would ask that this be referred to traffic and parking, thank you.
All right, Counselor Strezzo would like to sign on, any further discussion? Here and none, this item is laid on the table for approval and referred to traffic and parking.
Item number 13 is an order submitted by Counselor Ballantyne, that the Director of SBCD advise the Ward Seven Counselor when they will implement the mobility plan for West Broadway, running from Route 16 to Holland Street, in order to create a dedicated bus lane.
Counsel Ballantyne.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Again, I think this is pretty self-explanatory, and I'd ask that this be referred to traffic and parking, thank you.
And no further discussion, this item is laid on the table for approval and referred to traffic and parking.
Item number 14 is an order submitted by Counselor Davis, that the Director of SBCD meet directly with the business owners along Holland Street and College Avenue to ensure that there will be access to those businesses throughout the project.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd actually like to, to amend this one. I submitted it in response to a few initial communications for business owners, and, and so it's specific to some of those concerns, but since then, there's been a number of other business owners that have come forward and expressed some concerns about the, the plan itself, including that they didn't feel that, well, first, many that they didn't know about it, despite a lot of, you know, communication and attempts by the administration to, to provide that sort of notice. If they didn't know about it, obviously, you know, then didn't do enough to, to inform them, but you know, so rather than have this be specific to access throughout the project, I'd like to, to amend it, to read, to, to ensure that they are sorry, I had it, I had it a moment ago, now it's gone. Maybe this is a longer project to, let's just say to discuss the, all aspects of the current plan.
And on the amendment, any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote on the amendment.
This is a roll call vote on the amendment of item number 14, to replace the last phrase with the new phrase, discuss all aspects of the plan. On that amendment, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen. Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all ten councilors who are present have voted in favor of that amendment, that item has now been amended.
All right, Counselor Ballantyne would like to sign on to this motion, any further discussion? Here and none, this item is laid on the table for approval.
Mr. President, sign on to the order, thank you.
Yes, yes, we're on the order.
Item number 15 is an order submitted by Counselor Davis and Counselor Ballantyne, that the Commissioner of Public Works update this council on any recent changes to what is or is not permitted in city recycling and how communication of such changes has or could have been made.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President, and just to, to clarify, it should, should read, has or, or could be made to the extent that there's additional communication, not to, certainly not to second guess or, 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 you know, pointing your fingers or anything. This, this came up just because someone in my ward, a friend actually posted on social media, some guidance as to what, what can now be or not be recycled, and what can be recycled, and much of it was news to me, and I kind of looked back to what I'd received and couldn't, couldn't find sort of specific guidance. I know there's been a ton of changes, and it seems like almost every day, perhaps, well, not every day, but you know, regularly, you, you know, you see in the news different stories about, you know, some of the, some of the challenges with the recycling system, certainly that's something that's been talked about for a few, a couple of years now, since we we've learned that much of what we thought was being recycled, in fact, really wasn't for a variety of reasons. So, you know, specifically, the, the, this, this constituent at least said that the, the black plastic bottoms to the, to the carryout, to the to-go containers for food can't be recycled, something having to do with that, that color not being able to be sensed by the machines. I, I can't speak to the, the accuracy of that, but I've been putting those things in, been ordered from a lot of restaurants and putting those things in the recycling and, and I thought, well, geez, you know, let's, let's just see if we can get some clarification and, and, and have a discussion about how we can communicate that, not only to, to, to the public, but you know, if there are things like that, you know, we have a, the city has a ban on polystyrene takeout or to-go containers, which is a good thing, I supported when Council of Works pushed that, and, and many, many others as well. And so if rest, maybe restaurants don't know, maybe, maybe there's better choices they can make, and so, you know, just whatever communication we can have, I know it's, you know, there's, there's a lot going on, a lot of challenges that businesses are facing, so we certainly don't want to impose any additional burdens on them, but, you know, to the extent that they can make some choices that would, wouldn't necessarily have a significant impact, that might help as well. So just wanted to really get some information and then, and then we can sort out what to do with it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Here and no further discussion, this item is laid on the table for approval.
And, and Mr. President, may, may I ask, I mean, is that, and perhaps through you to, to Counsel Ballantyne in a roll, is that something that you would like to have a follow-up on in the committee, Counsel Ballantyne?
Yes, I think it's a good idea, thank you.
I want to respect your, your, your docket there, so I don't want to ask without, if, okay.
Yes, excuse me, my apologies, Mr. President, through you, yes, thank you.
Which committee?
The Overspacing Environment.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, this item is laid on the table for approval and referred to Environment, Open Space and Energy. There's some people, now unless you don't tell me that you want it referred to committee, I generally just approve it, and I would always encourage people to not send it to committee if it's something that doesn't need to be thoroughly discussed, but this sounds like it's one that is. So this item is in Open Space, Environment and Energy.
Item 16 is an order submitted by Counselor Niedergang, that the mayor and the chief of police discuss with this council why there is so little traffic enforcement conducted by the police department, why its traffic division has so few officers, and how it plans to address the public safety crisis made obvious with four pedestrians killed by motor vehicles in the last two years.
Counselor Niedergang.
Thank you, Mr. President, please send this to Traffic and Parking.
And no further discussion, this item is laid on the table for approval and referred to Traffic and Parking.
Item 17 is an order submitted by Counselor Niedergang, that the Director of SBCD review the attached presentation by Zachary Rosenberg, Chair of the Pedestrian and Transit Advisory Committee, and report to the Traffic and Parking Committee how the successful traffic calming measures implemented in the Netherlands can be replicated here.
All right, Counselor Strezzo and Ballantyne would like to sign on, Counselor Niedergang.
Thank you, Mr. President, please send this also to Traffic and Parking, and it's a very quick read, this presentation, it's very visual, it's, it's quite striking. I learned a lot just in five minutes of looking at it, all the possibilities of things that we might be able to do here. I think everybody would find it interesting, I encourage you to take a quick look at it when you get a chance. Thank you.
All right, any further? All right, any further conversation? See, none. This item will be laid on the table for approval and referred to traffic and parking.
Item number 18 is a resolution submitted by Counselor Niedergang and Counselor Davis that the Mayor and the Director of Infrastructure and Asset Management report to this council no later than January 28, 2021, on the future of the Brown School and plans to use it in the 2021-22 school year.
Counsel Ballantyne would like to sign on. Counsel Niedergang.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Counselor Davis may have something to say on this. I think he has a closer connection to the Brown School community than I do. But we've been getting some questions about the future of the Brown School. And uh, I think in February and March, parents will need to start uh making choices, public school parents, about what school they uh would like to send their child, their children to. And so it seems uh there's been a lot of doubt expressed about, well, it's been, it's been stated that the Brown School cannot be reopened due to COVID uh as it as it is presently. So that has uh put into question the future of the school uh for for use in the next school year, the 2021-2022 school year. It seems seems important that uh parents know whether that is an option for their children at the time when they have to choose. And this is perhaps a school committee issue, but as we know, uh, the the Mayor and the administration are in charge of the school buildings. So I I'm not sure, I I don't want to just have this disappear. I'd like to have it sent to some committee or else be put back on the agenda on January 28th. I'm not sure how best to deal with it. I'd ask uh your opinion on that, Mr. President, uh, and that's all I have to say on it. Thank you.
Yeah, Counsel Niedergang, I would say, um, I believe you have another order and uh requests in the mayor appear to discuss openings in general um that we're hopefully going to discuss at the next meeting. So maybe we lay this one on the table and keep it on the agenda uh so we can discuss it then. Does that work for you?
Uh, yes, thank you. I think that would be fine. My guess is that the administration and the mayor won't be prepared to discuss this as early as next Thursday, but sure, let's just keep it on the agenda as uh, you know, as uh, what is it called? Uh, business uh, whatever it is, that category. Thank you.
Yes, unfinished business. Yes, uh, Counsel Strezel would like to sign on. And I'll give people a quick update about the schools as well, uh, just real quick, because we discussed this at the school committee meeting on Monday. Uh, currently, you know, we're waiting for these HVAC systems to come, which um this council has approved. Uh, and unfortunately, because there's such high demand for these things, uh, we have not been able to get them yet. And as of Monday, the city announced that uh the schools won't be opening until eight March at the earliest. Um, and they did discuss in previous meetings uh what priorities the these HVAC systems would have, which schools they would go to. And the Brown School is not on that list because it's viewed as a building that requires too much work um in too short a time to really establish a good ventilating system there. So uh, on my, in my opinion, this is not, this is just me commenting on what I've heard is that I, it doesn't seem like the Brown School would be on the top of the list of schools to reopen when schools finally reopen. And I see Counsel Niedergang, you have a comment?
Um, yes, my understanding is that the Brown School is definitely not reopening this year. Uh, so this order is about the next school year, 2021-2022. But I I do have a question for you while we're on this topic, uh, Mr. President, if if it's in order, which is um, it was mentioned to me that the high school, which has a a very, you know, modern and uh effective HVAC system may be open as early as the first or second week in January. Was anything stated about uh the intention of using the high school for students at that time?
Yeah, well, up until Monday, the plan was to open in January, but as of Monday, none of the schools will be open until March. And this is coming from the mayor's office, uh, just to clarify that.
That includes the new high school, which is.
But to my understanding, I, at the meeting, and it's all video recorded, people can view it if they like, it was stated that we, school will not be open until March at the earliest.
Thank you.
And any further discussion? See, none. We're going to lay this item on the table with no vote taken.
Item number 19 is an order submitted by Counselor Niedergang that the Director of Sustainability and the Environment or other administration representative discuss with this council increasing the number of electric vehicle charging stations.
Counsel Niedergang and Counsel Strezzo and Ballantyne would like to sign on.
Oh, great, because I was going to ask uh uh the Chair of uh Open Space and Environment if this is a relevant issue to go to committee, because I, there have been discussions about this over the years, but I haven't kept up with them. So I don't know where it's at. I don't want to, you know, put it into committee if there's really nothing to discuss. Uh, but if if it is a topic, a live topic, then then I would ask that it go to that committee. Thank you.
Okay, looks like I got Counselors uh Ballantyne, Strezzo, Davis, Scott and Ba would all like to sign on. And will they lay this item on the table for approval and refer to open space, environment and energy? Does that sound good?
Yes, it does. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very good. Um, item laid on the table for approval, referred to open space.
Item number 20 is an order submitted by Counselor Niedergang that the Director of SBCD, the Director of Parks and Recreation, or the Commissioner of Public Works discuss with this council the installation of electrical outlets in parks, playgrounds and other public places to charge cell phones, computers and other such equipment.
Counsel Niedergang.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I I would put this in the speculative category. Somebody suggested this uh to me, and it seemed like an interesting idea that might be worth exploring. Uh, I don't know if it should go to committee, if there's any interest in it. But uh, but it it seemed like a, like an interesting idea. I I know that people uh, you know, uh, often uh, when they're out, which of course, we're not very much now, but will be hopefully sometime next year. Uh, you know, often run into problems with uh their devices not having enough charge in them. So uh, it's just an idea that I wanted to throw out. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? See, no further discussion. I have two counselors willing to take it up on, since we did two in open space. I'll send this one to Public Utilities and Public Works. Uh, laid on the table for approval, referred to Public Utilities.
Item number 21 is a communication submitted by City Councilors Rosetti and Mbah reporting on the newly formed Memorialization Committee.
Counsel Rosetti.
Mr. President, I just wanted you all to become aware that um we have had three meetings so far. We're having at least one meeting a month. There um is a website up that the link is attached to this order for all of my colleagues to uh make note of. I'm asking that you please add that link in your uh communication blasts to your constituents in your uh individual wards. And of course, the at-large as well, if you could spread the the news. Um, the link on the city's website explains what this committee's charge is. And there's also um notation of any mem- member of our community who wishes to have a name brought forward for consideration by the Memorialization Committee. Um, we are charged with the responsibility of of naming um city-owned locations. The member must be deceased to have this recognition. And um two of the parks or two of the areas that are under discussion now uh for an anticipated vote soon would be a dedication of the new park at 1050 Broadway, which is the site of the old Powderhouse Community School, as well as a new st- new street that will be developed outside of Boynton Yard. Those are two of the items that the committee is discussing now. That link brings you to our agendas, our minutes, and also how you can, anybody can submit a name for consideration. The website is www dot Somerville MA dot gov slash departments slash IAM as in Mary slash memorialization dash committee. I would yield to my colleague, Council Mbah, who also serves on this committee with me.
Counsel Mbah.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, thank you, Counsel Rosetti. I would, I couldn't have said it better, you know, than you. That was eloquent and very succinct. So uh, yeah. So I fully, you know, support that. And uh, just to underscore that the fact that we need uh folks to reach out and bring us, you know, uh, people that have had profound impact and also to remind folks that we are also committed to uh uh equity, you know, in this Memorialization Committee. So it's uh, it's pretty clear that it's been predominantly, you know, like uh all white men that have been memorialized, but uh no women, very few people of color. And so we are looking forward to harmonize, you know, our values as a community as it's changing to kind of like uh put equity front and center, you know, as we move forward in this committee. Thank you.
All right, on the uh report, I have Counsel Niedergang and Counsel Scott.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I I'd like to ask uh through you to Counsel Rosetti or Counsel Ba. Um, I've been working with so, with a group of residents on a memorial and was told uh this week by the administration that the Memorialization Committee has not yet developed the uh rules and policies and procedures and rules and regulations that would be necessary for approval of uh of such a memorial, so therefore can't proceed. So the the ordinance says, quote, "The committee is tasked with developing the policies and procedures for the naming of public building spaces and streets. In addition, the committee shall develop a policy and procedure for the installation of memorial benches, artwork or other objects subject to the limitations set out in Section F of this ordinance." So apparently that work has not yet been done. And I'd like to ask the two of you, do you, you have any information on when the committee plans to uh write those policies and regulations? And uh, if not, can you please urge the committee to do so uh as quickly as possible so that uh memorials that may be in the works can move forward? Thank you.
I can take that. Um, if uh Counsel Ba will allow me to answer first.
Sure.
Counsel Rosetti.
Thank you. Um, so the committee has been discussing this from the very first meeting. What we're doing at this point, while we are determining the criteria and and guidelines to go by in choosing anyone for any matter um before us, um, we're creating right now a master list of potential names. But in that master list, we are requesting um so far members of the committee and the uh city has been recommending some names for consideration, which are slowly adding to this master list we're trying to create. But we're also um expecting, and it, I believe it says it on the website, it should, uh backup information about that individual and um the and the reason that they're being, they're asked to be considered for our memorial so that we understand more about that person. Then the committee will do its own back on checking on individuals and of course, checking with family members to make sure that they are comfortable with a memorialization. Um, so we're in, we're still in discussion about the actual policy and rule setting for that. But Counsel Niedergang, I would encourage you um to send to that link and CC myself and Counsel Ba on the person and the information you have to date, because we could um perhaps work together in that regard and help move that along.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we will proceed.
Yeah, and thank you, Counsel Rosetti, for you, for, you know, uh, taking a stab at that. Yeah, like, we were really pushing for this in the beginning, and at some point, since it's a newly formed committee, the folks have said, let's just go by the ordinance and then, you know, like, take action based on that ordinance, that this is, the ordinance has stipulated XYZ, and so we should just go by that. So I personally was pushing for that, this policy right from day one. And so, yeah, so we will need your help, Counsel Niedergang, if you want to, you know, like, uh, send us the memo so that we can now really, you know, create that structure. And we just, it was only last meeting that we had our chair, that, you know, somebody that was chairing the committee. First, it was just the city that was running the the meeting. So uh, it's still at this preliminary stage. So we are willing to take input from other counselors. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Scott.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. With your indulgence, I'd like to uh make a comment, a question and then a request. The um comment is just thanking the work of the counselors and also uh Jesse Moose, who is serving city staff to the Memorialization Committee. Uh, that, I think it's wonderful. Uh, the question through you to Counsel Rosetti was uh regarding that street um back in Boynton Yards. I I thought my understanding was that uh, I mean, I'd given my blessing to a a suggestion that had been made. I thought that was already going to be voted on. When when does that, when is that anticipated to come up for a vote?
If I may respond, Mr. President?
Please do.
Thank you, through you um to Counsel Scott. Mr. Moose was hoping there would be a vote at this past meeting, but the committee was a little hesitant and wanted to do some more background checking themselves and um to be assured that there were no other um suggestions that should be considered for the naming of that street. Uh, but i- i- it was the hope of um Mr. Moose that the committee may may take a vote in January. So we are, we are close to a vote, but um still wanted to do a little bit of uh background checking on it.
Okay, uh, sounds good. I've been talking to some of the residents of the neighborhood. It turns out the uh, uh, some folks here in Union Square have actually been in touch with some of the descendants of the person in question um and have some, actually have a photograph of that person and some more interesting family history. So if that would be helpful, I'd be happy to connect uh the committee to that information. I hope it can go forward. I appreciate it. And then uh the final, Mr. President, is just a request, which is as, as I heard, they're looking for ideas. Um, and as I heard my good colleague at large uh mention um a desire for diversity, uh, I would like to put forward the name of Francis Moore uh for strong consideration, especially as we look towards the creation of any future public service uh buildings. Uh, Francis Moore was the very first black police officer ever hired in the city of Somerville in 1974. Thank you.
Any further discussion? See, none.
I just. Mr. Mr. President.
I got Counsel Balance, Rosetti and Ballantyne.
Um, thank you very.
Counsel Rosetti.
Thank you. Uh, through you to Counsel Scott, please do submit that information on the individual for the street naming. That will be very helpful. Um, if you could send it to that link that's attached to this order and CC myself and Counsel Ba. And on Francis Moore, I'll be glad to bring that along with Counsel Mbah to the committee for the next meeting for discussion.
All right, Counsel Ballantyne.
Uh, I'm all set. Thank you. I withdraw.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Mbah.
Yeah, no, I just want to also like uh echo Counsel Rosetti. Thank you, uh, Counsel Scott. I think even right now, like, the the fact that I've heard from, you know, we've heard from you, heard from Counsel Niedergang, I think we'll probably have to even slow down from taking any vote until we develop an actual policy, you know, that will reflect these values. Thank you.
Any further comment on this communication? See, none. This communication is laid on the table and placed on file. Now, before we get into the reports, ladies and gentlemen, we have six more to go. And friendly reminder that we do not need to read the entire committee report, just the important items. And if there's a vote, that's especially important.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number 23 is a report of the Flood Forum Special Committee, which met on December 2nd.
Counsel Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. President. So uh, the uh committee, the Special Committee on Flood Forum met last week. Uh, I'm reporting that we've seen progress in the city's approach to addressing flooding. Uh, 18 months ago, uh, this council approved the reorganization of uh the Engineering Department capital projects. And we also uh to be now uh infrastructure. And we also, uh, to be now, uh, Infrastructure Asset Management. And we've also approved adding staff and increasing their, their budget. So, uh, at the committee meeting, um, the Director of I A N, I A M, the Director of Engineering and, uh, the Project Manager did a, an amazing presentation on, uh, flooding here in the city of Somerville. I would suggest that the public watch it. The present, uh, the presentation identified flooding areas like Richdale, Union Square, Duck Village, Albion, El Weisbrook Parkway, Concord. Um, and it also, um, uh, so it showed that on a map. And then it also took the three-one-one calls where constituents have been complaining or emails have come in, it come in. And they laid that on top of, uh, the, the diagnostic, uh, consultant, uh, consulting works, uh, that was done, and they found that there was consistency. So that was, uh, reassuring to see that the, that, uh, the actual problems that exist, uh, uh, and the work that the consultants did was, um, consistent with constituents calling in. So, uh, if you look on the meeting minutes, you will also see that Director Raish had sent us an email and also attached to the agenda on February twenty-first, dealing with all the items in committee, so you can look for specific responses there. Um, but basically, they know where the problem is. They're in the process of developing plans, um, for a majority of the city. They have some, um, uh, plans for Union Square and for Richdale. They've also, which I think is really important, is they, they will be publicizing this going forward, but they've set up an account, an email account that's called flooding@somervillema.gov. Um, because they want to hear from constituents, so you can certainly call three-one-one, but you can also send them an email to tell them if there are flooding problems. They want to collect that information and data. Uh, they've also set up a dedicated website at, uh, somervillema.gov/ floodready. And, um, a specific, I would say, my colleague, um, from Ward Six asked me to note, uh, what had gone on at Clifton back in twenty fifteen. Uh, the director identified that there was a broken pipe underneath the, uh, bike path, which caused the flooding. It was corrected at the time. They have identified though that there is, uh, more systemic problems for that area. But in relation to that specific order at the time, uh, it was identified and it was corrected. And they are in the process of developing a larger plan. I would like to note that there are no items left in this committee. Thank you. I move for the committee report to be accepted.
A clear committee assignment. Good job, Council Ballantyne. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, this item is laid on the table, uh, for approval.
Item number twenty-four is a report of the Committee on Land Use, which met on December eighth.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, um, Mr. President. Um, the Committee on Land Use did meet on December eighth. Uh, all members were present, with the exception of, uh, Chair Ewan Campen, who was attending to his duties as a parent. Uh, I took the chair, uh, as Vice Chair of the Committee. Um, the minutes are, uh, as always, uh, detailed and well, uh, crafted. I'll note, um, two, uh, two things specifically, just to call out. Um, one, uh, one is the discussion of, uh, the proposed Affordable Housing Overlay. Um, Mr. Bartman, uh, uh, provided some changes to that, uh, based on, uh, the public comments and, and questions and, um, a, a discussion from, uh, the Committee of the Whole. Uh, previously, um, they all seemed to address, uh, some of the issues that had been raised. And that item was, uh, recommended for approval. Um, we have a separate item on the agenda that is item fifty-three, and then I believe there is also a late item, uh, that is the recommendation of the Planning Board that was taken this evening. Um, it's still this evening, right? Um, a long time ago, uh, and so a- after, uh, after the vote of the committee report, um, I would like to request that items fifty-three and the late item, uh, be taken up separately. I will note that, uh, at, at the time, well, during the meeting, um, after we had, uh, taken the vote to, to amend it at the, with the reminder of Councilor Niedergang, um, I, I did explain that we will, of course, uh, await the Planning Board's recommendation. And if it comes through with any, um, any comments, any, you know, recommended changes, anything that's not consistent with what we had before us, then we, you know, by all means can send this back to committee and, and consider those and discuss those. My understanding from, uh, from Mr. Bartman is that the Planning Board recommendation, uh, was unanimous, that, uh, that it be approved, that the Affordable Housing Overlay be approved. There is no changes or any other, uh, commentary. Um, I mentioned only a separate, uh, request that we look into additional things that can be done on projects that have, uh, market rate housing to, uh, increase the number of affordable units that might be included there. So, uh, would be a separate project. So, um, with, you know, with that, I think my, my, my hope is that we will, this, uh, council will, um, will agree to take up item fifty, uh, fifty-three and ultimately, um, uh, we'll have to read and roll and ordain that, uh, that item into law this evening. Um, and, uh, spoiler alert, I, I, my understanding is that Council Ewan Campen has joined us. So, uh, at that time, I'd like to, uh, or perhaps I'll just shut up and let him speak, uh, uh, speak up and, um, and, and take the lead on, uh, on seeing this one through as he, uh, he so ably chaired this process through, uh, the, the vast bulk of, of discussions. So, uh, the other item I just wanted to, to, to flag, it was the first time we discussed, um, some proposals that, um, discussing committees, some proposals that I had, I had made, uh, over a year ago when we were, uh, talking towards the, the end of the zoning overhaul discussion, um, to, uh, to create some, uh, density bonuses. Uh, Mr. Bartman explained that we ought to call them development bonuses, um, or development benefits. Actually, uh, this would be to, um, in, in certain MR, uh, districts and commercial core districts to allow additional building height, uh, in exchange for, uh, set, uh, community benefits. Essentially would be to, um, to, to ordain in, in the, in the zoning code, um, what, what we get. Uh, if, if developers are gonna get an extra floor or two, or, or, or whatever the case may be, I suppose potentially three as it's currently drafted in, uh, if, if we start with a commercial core three. Um, going up to potentially six stories. Uh, there's, there's a lot of work still to do on this, um, but Mr. Bartman did put together sort of a quick initial draft. I would encourage people to take a look at the report, um, because it has some details of our discussion, which are important to understand. Uh, and then the, um, the, the, the very initial, Mr. Bartman described in the sort of an alpha version, not even a beta version, um, of, of the, of the language is on the somervillezoning.com website, so folks can take a look at that. Um, this will be an ongoing discussion, but, uh, obviously, as always, we'll very much value, uh, folks' input, um, on, uh, on those proposals and, and how we can make them work, if in fact we, uh, we find a way to make them work. So, um, with that, Mr. President, I would request that the, uh, the, um, minutes be approved or the report be, uh, accepted as soon.
All right, Counselor Davis moves to accept the committee report as submitted. Uh, on that, did you say we had Council Ewan Campen here?
We do indeed.
Council Ewan Campen on the committee report? Of course, showing up after all the hard work is done. As usual.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, and, and thank you so much to Counselor Davis. Um, it is great to see you all, um, and I, I just want to really thank all of you for, for all the support that you've offered over the last week as, as me and Alex, um, have, have welcomed our son to the world. Um, so I'm, I'm very glad to be able to be here just for a few minutes, um, during our, our new nightly routine. Um, and I just want to offer a huge, huge debt of gratitude to my colleague Lance Davis uh, for chairing this week's meeting and for all his help, um, as the previous Chair of Land Use. Um, and of course, everyone on the committee who put in a ton of work on this over the last few months, um, as well as the colleagues on the council, and of course, to Dan Bartman, who has just been totally instrumental in getting this done. Um, and to Ms. Polanco, members of the Housing Division, the Office of Housing Stability. Um, this was really a team effort, and I'm really, really glad that we were able to get this together um, and put something together that I really believe is going to do a lot of good in the city. Um, I'm, I'm very grateful also to the members of the Planning Board for, for their work and support on this. Um, I'm not gonna give a speech, um, I think we all understand this. Um, but I, I do just want to say one thing that, that came to mind as I was thinking about this. Um, I, I, a couple of weeks after I got elected, um, one of my first office hours, I was in Union Square. And one of the people who came was Tina, the Crossing Guard, who I'm sure you all know. Um, and I asked her, "What do, what do you think I should be doing, um, as a new city councillor?" And I have always remembered this, and I quote, she said, "You should do something to help the lower-income people." Um, and that has just been, you know, a, a sort of a, a guiding principle, I, I think, for all of us. And this is something that I just think is going to, um, years from now. Um, people won't even think about it, but it will have led to a lot of good. So I'm just really thankful to all of you for the work that's put in. Um, and I, I hope that, uh, that, um, that this will do as much good as I think it will. So, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I am certainly not in a mental state to know which particular items need to be brought up now. Um, uh, but I trust that, uh, Vice Chair Davis has, has got that all in order.
Yes, we do have a number of items. Uh, so Counselor Scott?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to echo my thanks to all of the people, uh, just mentioned by my colleague in Ward Three. I, I just want to talk about, very briefly, the absolute urgency and importance of what we're doing here. Um, and to point out that there is still more to go. Tonight in Cambridge, just right across the line from me here, um, their Zoning Board of Appeals, their BZA over there, uh, heard yet another meeting about a proposed one-hundred percent affordable housing development. Not of seven stories, but of nine stories. They're building in steel. It can be done for affordable housing. And this nine-story development is facing stiff neighborhood opposition. The, the fact is that while I appreciate the restraint that's been shown in this initial, uh, approach uh, and the willingness of the council to, to push this through, and, and obviously all the city staff that has supported it, you know, there are developers on an eight-thousand-square-foot lot that are putting up nine stories and, uh, forty-nine affordable homes and are being negotiated down. So, uh, our passing this hopefully will encourage projects like that to come here. Um, and I'm open to an on-the-fly amendment this evening, but I won't infuriate Counselor Davis or Counselor Ewan Campen, uh, by making the motion tonight. Um, but buildings even taller of a hundred percent affordable housing are, are within, within our reach. So, um, if anybody would like to support that, uh, I, I'll leave it to them to make the motion. I just want to point out that this isn't theoretical. This is happening right now in the region. And it's a real possibility here, and hopefully we're unlocking some of that tonight, and hopefully more of that in the near future. Uh, once again, congratulations to all involved. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Counselor Bah?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Myself, I also want to extend my, uh, uh, same sentiment. I'm really happy over joy to see this happening, because it's very easy to say that you want something. And then, when it's time to, you know, do the work or say, you know, do some heavy lifting, you see people, you know, shy away. So this is like one thing that we can look back and say, "Wow." So I want to thank everybody that has contributed in their own way to make this happen. Because we've seen so many projects have failed, you know, just because of people, you know, like, they will say one thing that they care about for the building, they care about affordable housing, but no, not, not here. Go build it somewhere else, you know, so this is, you know, and I mean, this is, we are still not anywhere like Counselor Scott said, you know, near where we want to be, but this is a step in the right direction for our city. So thank you, you know, uh, Counselor Ewan Campen, Chair Davies, and the, you know, all the, uh, committee members on Land Use. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Strezzo, did you want to speak?
I was just, um, getting comfortable on my couch. Thank you.
Okay, um, any further discussion on the committee report? Seeing none, uh, this, well, I guess we'll, we got a few things to do here. So we got a number of roll call votes. Uh, let's start with a roll call vote on the committee report.
Mr. President, this is a roll call vote on the acceptance of the report of the Committee on Land Use, which has been presented on that motion, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Umba?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne?
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo?
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen?
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, all eleven councilors have voted in favor of that report. That report has been approved.
All right, Counselor Davis would like to take item number fifty-three out of order, as well as the late item, uh, the Planning Board recommendation. Uh, seeing no discussion, uh, Mr. Clerk, please read the two items.
First, Mr. President, is the communication submitted by the Planning Director submitting amendments to the zoning ordinances to establish an Affordable Housing Overlay District as approved by the Land Use Committee on December eighth. That was item fifty-three. The late item is a, uh, communication submitted by the Planning Board conveying its recommendations regarding an affordable housing overlay.
Counselor Davis?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. President. Um, as I said, uh, actually, is it possible, Mr. Clerk, to, uh, to put the Planning Board recommendation on the screen? I don't know, is it in the system such that you can do that?
Uh, just give me a minute. I will put it up while you're talking.
All right, very well. Um, I will, I will read it, uh, the relevant, uh, portion, because it's brief. It's, uh, following a motion by Clerk Sandvaneen, seconded by Chair Michael Capitano. The Somerville Planning Board voted unanimously five to nothing to recommend the proposed Affordable Housing Overlay District for adoption by the City Council, period. Chair Capitano also respectfully requests that the council investigate a similar development benefit program oriented toward market rate development that provides additional affordable zoning units. That is the entirety of the recommendation. As I, as I said earlier, uh, it, uh, does not request or recommend changes to this item that's before us. Uh, and therefore, I would, uh, ask that the council, um, move forward with, uh, approval of this, uh, of this item, uh, which I believe would require three votes. Um, briefly, on, on the substance, um, you know, I won't echo the, some of the speeches that were already given, um, but I'd like to say that I, I agree and, uh, and, um, and, and appreciate those words. Um, you know, the, 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 for the council's, uh, you know, awareness, there were, we had a number of discussions on this. This didn't move through quickly, and it didn't look exactly like it does now. Um, there were some, I, I would, in my opinion, I call them concessions made, um, in order to, uh, to resolve some concerns. Um, I personally wish that this was more permissive. I've said all along that, um, and, and just about anything you want to build, if it's a hundred percent affordable, uh, you know, uh, it, it's very likely to be okay. I suppose there's, there's, there's limitations somewhere, but, uh, you know, personally, they're, they're beyond what is here. But, uh, it was clear through discussions that there, there were some concerns and, um, you know, uh, Chair Ewan Campen and myself, um, uh, had discussions about this throughout the process and, and really wanted to make sure that, uh, and, and following his lead, I really wanted to make sure that we were able to get something passed. Um, as Council McLaughlin has said, we, we still haven't built a whole heck of a lot of affordable housing, even under the new zoning. And so, um, I, I'd love to see a nine-story, a hundred percent affordable building go up, built out of steel. Um, we have an ordinance in front of us, in front of us now. Let's see if we can get some stuff filled, built. And, uh, I'd be happy to come back to this after the fact. So I will, I will very strongly encourage my, my colleagues to, to move forward with what we have here. Um, while it's, uh, not as permissive, as I would like it to be, um, it's, uh, it's not nothing. And there's one other thing I should mention that I should have mentioned during the report. I apologize, but it's relevant to this topic now. During the public hearing, we heard a lot about accessibility, um, and particularly having, uh, uh, street-level, ground-level access. Um, I, I made a comment that perhaps we, we could make some easily- Um, I, I made a comment that perhaps we, we could make some, easily make some tweaks to this ordinance to, to allow that. Mr. Bartman pointed out that, uh, no tweaks are necessary. There already is in the zoning ordinance. Um, an allowance that if somebody wants to build an accessible unit, they don't have to have it above ground level. All they have, all they have to do is, is exercise an option that's already there. So that's the good news. Um, so just for the folks who, who wrote, who raised that issue, we did hear you. We did have a conversation about it. Uh, that specific thing is already, uh, is already there. So certainly somebody could build, uh, those types of units using this ordinance, um, as it's conceived. And, uh, you know, if there's more that we can do to the, or to the zoning ordinance generally, we, we can have that conversation, but, um, it, you know, it wouldn't necessarily relate to this specifically. Um, so that's, uh, that is sort of the one other aspect of it. Um, so I will stop talking. Uh, obviously we have a, a planning board recommendation, and so it's the first time you all are seeing it. Um, I just saw it earlier this evening after the vote that was taken, um, right around the time we began this meeting. Uh, so, um, happy to answer any questions if folks have any, um, about other changes or tweaks or parts of the discussion. But otherwise I would then request that the item be, uh, approved and that the ordinance be adopted.
All right, any discussion? Here are no discussions. So, Mr. Clerk, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, we can do a roll call vote to approve item 53 on the planning board report, and then we got to do enrollment and ordainment.
Mr. President, that's, uh, almost perfect. The planning board report can simply be, uh, placed on file, uh, and, and rolled into a vote later on.
Okay, so we need two or three votes on item 53.
Three votes will do the, will do it.
Okay. So any discussion on item 53 before we do a roll call vote? So roll call vote on approval.
This is a roll call vote on the approval of item number 53, which is the, uh, updated Affordable Housing Overlay District zoning ordinance. On that motion, Councilor Klingon.
Yes.
Councilor Mbah.
Yes.
Councilor White.
Yes.
Councilor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councilor Niedergang.
Yes.
Councilor Davis.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Councilor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Councilor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, 11 councillors have voted in favor, uh, not opposed. That item has now been approved.
All right, on enrollment.
On enrollment of that same item, Councilor Klingon.
Yes.
Councilor Mbah.
Yes.
Councilor White.
Yes.
Councilor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councilor Niedergang.
Yes.
Councilor Davis.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Councilor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Councilor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils have voted in favor of enrollment. That item is now enrolled.
All right, on ordainment.
On ordainment of that ordinance, Councilor Klingon.
Yes.
Councilor Mbah.
Yes.
Councilor White.
Yes.
Councilor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councilor Niedergang.
Yes.
Councilor Davis.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Councilor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Councilor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, again, all 11 councils have voted in favor. That ordinance has now been ordained.
Very good. Um, let's place the late item planning board recommendation laid on the table, placed on file. Anything further to be done with these items?
No, Mr. President.
And Ben Ewan Campen's child says, thank you. All right, next item. Thank you for coming, Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to clarify, it's not just that he says thank you, it's that his name is Simon, so Simon says thank you.
Simon says. So good. Get out of here. Unless we want to stick around for racial profiling. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 25 is a report of the Committee on Legislative Matters, which met on December 3rd.
Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, it, boy, it's, it's going to be an evening to, uh, to get up a good bottle tonight. Um, and talking about Councilor Ewan Campen's child bottle, of course. Um, uh, so the Committee on, uh, Legislative Matters did meet on, uh, on the 3rd. Uh, all members were present, uh, with the exception of Councilor Ewan Campen, for, uh, for the reason that he was attending to his, uh, newborn child. Um, we discussed a number of matters, um, and, uh, which I will, uh, I'll give a brief overview of the, the primary discussion. But, uh, I, I will note that the, there is a separate item, uh, before us, item 54, uh, that is submission of a, a draft. Um, well, of a, a proposed final, um, in that bias and racial profiling ordinance, uh, that the committee did, uh, recommend, approved, on which the committee did, uh, recommend approval. Um, although we didn't have the, the actual draft before us at the time, so we'll, we'll, we'll have to take action on that separate item. Following, uh, action on the, on the report, Mr. President, I would like to take item 54 out of order. And so for the purposes of, of moving for approval, uh, enrollment and ordainment. Um, the, uh, and, and I'll talk about the details of that one at the time. I would, I would request perhaps, um, my, my colleagues could hold their comments on that specific item until we, until we take it up separately. Um, uh, but of course, uh, wish the President. Um, the other, uh, primary topic was, um, the various surveillance technology impact reports that were submitted. Um, in, uh, as part of the administration's, um, processing of the, uh, surveillance technology ordinance that was passed last year. Um, yeah. There's, there, this has been an ongoing, um, uh, process. And, um, thank you to, uh, several representatives from the police department who have put a lot of work into, um, into providing the detailed descriptions of these, uh, various technologies that we, um, are using or, or, or in some cases may, uh, use. The ordinance has, uh, some timeframes in it and, and there, there are some, uh, there's, there's a bit of a potential wrinkle in the interpretation, but, uh, uh, at least one interpretation is that we are required to, we, the council are required to take action within 60 days of, of the submission of the technology impact reports. Um, and because when they first came in, um, because this is something very new and, and other municipalities have very thin and, and not detailed reports. Uh, the committee asked for revisions to many of them, and that takes time, a lot of time. And so the, the, uh, the administration and the police department has, has, um, undertaken to do that and, and fill those requests. But all by way of saying, with the holidays coming up and the recess, we won't, uh, we, we won't, uh, get these done, um, within 60 days. And so in the, in the spirit of, of wanting to continue to collaborate and work forward, uh, move forward and, and work together with the administration. Um, Director Weber, uh, agreed that the administration, uh, with the exception of two of the reports, the administration will be withdrawing these submissions. Um, so that they, the reports can be revised, uh, based on, uh, the council's questions and some, um, input we've received from outside groups. Uh, and then resubmitting them so that we can, uh, uh, won't have to, uh, have any question about the, the timing. Um, and frankly, uh, you know, they are, what, what we will have will be different enough that it's, it's entirely appropriate and, and, um, and, and accurate that they'll, they'll be really resubmitted. So that's, uh, expect to see that. I, I, I think, um, unless Director Weber wants to, uh, correct me, I believe that will happen next week if the council's moving. Uh, that they will be withdrawn and, and, uh, perhaps resubmitted. The two that are not, uh, that, that, my understanding is that they will still, they'll hope to revise and, and move forward are the reports for 9/11, uh, 9/11, the 911 service and, uh, and ShotSpotter. So, um, stay tuned on that. But no action taken, uh, other than having that discussion. And I just, uh, uh, it's important for folks to know that that's sort of where we're going to go, um, and, and we'll see that next week. So, um, with that, I request that the, uh, report be accepted as submitted.
Your Councilor Davis must accept the committee report as submitted. On that, Councilor Scott.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. President, uh, and thanks to the Chair, uh, for continued vigilance and making sure that this actually, uh, raises to the level of, uh, scrutiny that we're looking for. I, I just had a question with regard to the reports or the, um, yeah, the reports filed to this point. There's an item later tonight, uh, requesting approval of a grant to purchase in thermal, in thermal imaging infrared cameras, uh, for a city department. Has there been a surveillance technology report filed for that particular item that we are being requested to accept a grant for tonight?
Mr. President, can I respond?
Yep. Oh, you asking me?
You're running, you're running the meetings there.
I, yeah, you're asking me if a report was filed for.
Well, I, I, I'm just asking to be recognized. I may respond to the question.
Oh, yeah, Councilor Davis, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, through you to Councilor Scott. Um, I, it, no, is, is my, unless, unless, uh, that technology is somehow incorporated in, uh, in, in one of the reports that we have, and, and I've just missed that. I don't believe that to be the case. Uh, and, and so I would anticipate that we would, uh, see that, uh, unless it's the administration's position that it, it would, that that technology would not follow with, fall within the definition of surveillance technology. Uh, and hypothetically speaking, um, so, uh, to my knowledge though, no, uh, not, none of the reports that are before us incorporate that technology.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. President, uh, seeing once again that there are no members of the administration or any city staff, um, just, just us clerks and councillors here tonight, uh, it doesn't appear there's anybody to answer this question. Um, I, I would ask the Chair if he'd like me to, uh, just push this item to committee and keep it there until we have an approved technology report, uh, on file. And, and, and I ask the question in the spirit of, of trying to support, um, the enforcement and implementation of this ordinance. Uh, because again, I don't know if this is, uh, the administration's position that it doesn't raise to the level of surveillance technology to have thermal imaging cameras that can see through walls. Um, or if it is, and in which case I would presume that we would need to receive an application to use this technology and then approve it before we accepted a grant for money and purchased the equipment. Um, I, Mr. President, I'd love to hear the Chair's thoughts on that, if, if you would, uh, allow that.
Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, through you to Councilor Scott. Um, uh, the, the disposition of, of the, the item that you referenced is, uh, obviously at the, at the will of the President and, 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 and in you as the Chair of Finance, um, you know, it's, but it sounds like the right approach. Um, I, I, I think, I, I want to, I want to make sure to, to, to say that, um, I, I don't, I, I don't expect that there is any sort of, you know, intent to, uh, to slide something through or anything along those lines. This is a new ordinance. Um, it is, uh, 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 the whole process is new. And, um, the administration and, uh, the police department has been, uh, you know, very responsive and, and trying to sort of work through and make sure that they understand what we're looking for. Um, with regard to the, the reports that we already have. Um, and, you know, uh, uh, it's, it's all a new process. So I, I, if Director Weber were here, um, I, I would anticipate that she would, uh, yeah, let us know that she's, she'll look into it and, and, uh, and, and certainly, uh, I don't anticipate the administration would object to, uh, um, to raising that. I, I, you know, to that end, I, I raised the question last night at a, at a public meeting. Um, some folk, some of our OSBCD folks mentioned, uh, cameras, uh, traffic cameras that are, you, cameras that can be used to, to, to monitor, uh, traffic. And I put the note out to Director Weber that said, hey, I'll think we have a report for that. And she said, oh, no. Um, geez, let me, let me look into it and, and, you know, no worries. So by way of saying, we're, we're, we're figuring this out, um, all of us on, 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 in, in both, uh, branches of the city government. So, um, it's a, it's a, it's a good catch, it's a good point, and I'm happy to follow up with Director Weber and make sure that, uh, if, you know, unless, unless they, they are of the opinion perhaps that it doesn't fall into the definition and, and we can have that conversation. We have, uh, an appropriate report for us before we allocate the money.
All right, uh, thank you. I'll, I'll take that in advisement for disposition of the item. Thank you, Mr. President, for your full brilliance.
All right, thank you. And I just want to clarify too, that Director Weber asked me if she could leave the meeting, and I said yes, because I didn't think, um, there was much left for her on this item, because, wow, we had discussed in committee that we would take it up in the new year.
Mr. President, let, let, let the record reflect that. It's, it's all your fault.
It is all my fault. I'm, I'm far too generous. Uh, people say that all the time and humble. Um, any further discussion? All right, so on the committee report, uh, I see no further discussion. We'll do a roll call vote on, uh, the, accepting the committee report.
This is a roll call vote on the acceptance of the committee, uh, report for the Committee on Legislative Matters. On that motion, Councilor Klingon.
Yes.
Councilor Mbah.
Yes.
Councilor White.
Yes.
Councilor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo. Councilor Strezzo. I do not record a vote for Councilor Strezzo. Councilor Niedergang.
Oh, uh, Clerk, uh, I'm here, yes.
Thank you. Councilor Niedergang.
Yes.
Councilor Davis.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campen. Councilor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Councilor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all 10 councillors present have voted in favor of the acceptance of the committee report.
Okay, now Councilor Davis would like to take which item out of order?
Item 50, 50, uh, no, easy for me to say, 54, Mr. President.
Councilor Davis would like to take item 54 out of order, seeing no objections. Mr. Clerk, please read item 54.
Item 54 is a report, uh, is a communication submitted by the Assistant City Solicitor, submitting an ordinance to prohibit biased-based policing and racial profiling as approved by the Legislative Matters Committee on December 3rd.
Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just to, uh, to say first thank you to Councilor Ba for, uh, for, for springing this. Um, and to the Solicitor's Office for working with him, uh, Captain Scott, uh, to, to put together a draft. Um, there are two things that, that I wanted to point out. You know, this is, um, this is not exactly the ordinance that I sort of anticipated we were chasing after, or after which we were chasing, um, i- i- in two ways. And I wanted to, to just make a quick point, uh, so folks understand, there are, there's one provision in here. Um, and I'm trying to put my finger on it, um, that, that relates to, um, um, uh, let me get, let me get the right language. Regarding pretextual stops. Um, I can't, anyways, um, so there, there's a provision in, in here that, that, that essentially just states that, uh, as state law and, uh, city police, police department policy, as well as the ordinance, uh, prohibit discriminatory pretextual stops. Uh, we had discussion about removing the word discriminatory and effectively making the ordinance, uh, prohibit pretextual stops. Um, that's what I thought we were, what was a big part of what I thought we were going to try and do with this ordinance. Um, the, the Solicitor's Office raised some concerns, um, based on, uh, existing cases, interpretations of, of the existing state law. Um, there, I, I had questions as to whether that would necessarily preclude us from going further than state law, but there was also some concerns about, uh, the degree to which we could, dictate to officers, uh, and, and, and upon their discretion, uh, on making stops. Um, and, uh, in, in discussion with the, the representatives from the police department. Um, they, they explained that, that, you know, intentionally going out and using a pretext to stop someone when they know they're looking for something else is not something that is, is common. It's something that is done maybe a handful of times, handful of times, if not less, uh, a year, um, in, in cases where they have a specific, uh, you know, description of a car, for, for example, uh, and, and are looking for, um, they, they brought up examples of, um, you know, guns specifically. So, uh, Councilor, uh, McLaughlin, I think correctly noted that even if So Counselor McLaughlin, I think, correctly noted that even if we drafted the law the way I had sort of proposed, you know, you'd, you'd really need to go inside the officer's brain to determine and prove that it was pretextual, and they were using it for that purpose. And so hearing the, hearing the request from Counselor Mbah that he had made to me earlier in the week to not let the perfect be the enemy of the good, I think this is more than good, pretty good, very good. It's not perfect, but I wanted to move it forward. And then the other point that we discussed was the degree to which demographic data is collected. The ACLU folks, when reviewing this, had suggested that we ought to require demographic data to be, be collected more directly. This report, or this ordinance would require any, that an annual report be made, including an analysis of available demographic data. Actually Deputy Carabino, as well as others, explained that the traffic, what do they call it, the ticket books that, that come down from the state level for, for traffic stops, already do include a, a place to report demographic data. It is essentially left to the discretion of the officer of, you know, whether or how to make that determination. There was discussion about the challenges of sort of trying to ordain that, put that into, into law, to force officers to make that decision for obvious reasons. So, but we were, members of the committee were heartened to know that we do have some, that that does exist in those books, in terms of the, the tickets that are used, or the citation books that are used for municipal violations, that information, that there's no space for demographic data. We had, we, we heard about that when we were talking about the mask ordinance, the mask order. So that's a discussion to be had at later time. But as it relates to this ordinance, whatever data we have, whatever demographic data we have, it would have to be reported. So those are the two sticky points that I had, that frankly, I, I let go, and sort of agreed to, to leave as proposed by the Solicitor's Office in, in the interest of getting this passed, because it is, it is something that we very much do not have, though we do have policies within the police department, as I alluded to earlier this evening. To their credit, this, this now puts it into law, and that's not nothing, it's a big deal. And I would like to suggest that, as Counselor Mbah was the initial sponsor, that if he has anything to add, I'd certainly defer to him on that, but otherwise we'd move to, for approval and enrollment.
All right, on the item, Counselor Mbah.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wow, cannot believe, you know, I was hoping that we would have this ordinance by June, you know, June twenty-fifth, in the hype of all this craziness that was happening. But I just want to, you know, say, you know, words of gratitude can only have expressed how I feel, because thank you, Counselor Davis, you know, for everything. Before I put this policy proposal forward, you know, I was aware that this is some of the police department policy prohibiting biased-based policing and racial profiling. But the policy, as you stipulated, is not an ordinance, you know? And though this ordinance doesn't go far enough as I would like, but, you know, we agree that it's a good start for our community. I have racially profiled myself, and most people of color have experienced this as well. Even my longtime friend, you know, and some of the residents in Ripaka have told me about racial profiling, going back decades. So, you know, I would just want to express my gratitude to the law department, especially Shannon Phillips, who was also very enthusiastic from start, you know, and helping me, you know, craft this language, Counselor Scott himself, you know, all the members of the Legislative Matters Committee, you know? I just want to say thank you, and to everyone on the city council. This wasn't like a one man's effort. We are all very supportive. And also to ACLU Massachusetts, especially to Reshan How, for his substanti- substantive contribution that he also contributed. We want to improve training, but training is not as critical as laws and policies. Besides, I have to be honest with you, Mr. President, and Chairman Davis, there's lots of evidence to show that training in fact got very little, if anything, to help with this problem, unfortunately. So we want people of color to feel safe, and we want policing to reflect our values as a community. I want to say thank you for everything you guys have done. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Scott.
No, I'd just like to thank Counselor Mbah and Davis and everybody else's work done here. I believe very strongly that not only is it possible to legislate around motive, it's appropriate to. For example, we do exactly that when it relates to hate crimes, or any number of other things where looking inside somebody's head is a determination that gets made. So I look forward to taking up the question of pretextual stops as a broader question, and whether or not they should be allowed. I have my strong opinions on them, but I support and applaud the efforts to get something on the books tonight, and as actually voting in favor, and then making a separate motion in the future meeting to, to look further into it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I believe we need a roll call vote on approval, enrollments and ordainment, correct, Mr. Clerk?
That is correct, Mr. President.
All right, roll call vote for approval.
This is a roll call vote on the approval of item number fifty-four, the racial profiling ordinance. On that item, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne. Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen. Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all ten counselors present have voted in favor of the approval of that item.
All right, on enrollment.
On enrollment of that item, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen. Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Again, Mr. President, all ten counselors present have voted in favor of enrollment.
None ordainment.
On ordainment of that item, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne. Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen. Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all ten counselors present have voted in favor of the ordainment of that ordinance. It has been ordained.
I'd like to move for reconsideration in hopes that reconsideration fails on item forty-four.
My favorite subject. Counselor Davis moves for reconsideration in the hopes that reconsideration fails.
My hope, Mr. President, is on, on the first vote that people will vote yes, and then in the second vote they will vote no.
I'm glad you stated your hope.
If they should choose to do so.
Okay, everybody got that? All right, any discussion, seeing none, on reconsideration, on the motion to reconsider.
This is a roll call vote on the motion to reconsider item number fifty-four, the racial profiling ordinance. On the motion to reconsider, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen. Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, ten councils have voted in favor of reconsideration. One counselor is absent. Item fifty-four is now before the council again.
Okay, now, Mr. Clerk, we had a discussion about this recently. In the sphere of opening up a procedural question, I think we said that we could just do the same vote again, and people can vote yes or no based on the actual item before us?
That is correct, Mr. President. Doing a little bit of research and looking at past practice, under our rules, we certainly can just revote the item with a simple kind of logical vote. And I want to say that past practice was to kind of reverse the vote, because when we were meeting physically in the chamber, it was often easier for the presiding officer to say after reconsideration, does anyone want to change their vote? Seeing none, reconsideration fails. But now with the open meeting law and, and virtual meetings, we have to conduct a roll call vote anyway. So the notion of just kind of simplifying the vote by saying, does anybody want to change their vote? That is how we did it in, physically in the chamber frequently, but it's not how it has to be done. And it may make a whole lot more sense to folks to just say that item fifty-four is now before the city council, and conduct a straight roll call vote on approval, or vote aye, or yes, or, or no.
Okay, so the summary of that is if you want this thing to pass, vote yes. You don't want it to vote pass, say no. Does any council have any issues with this before we move forward? I just want to make sure.
No.
Uh-oh, no. Don't confuse me.
How many no, or how many yes?
No, I do not have any questions.
Okay, no, I don't either. All right, so just to be clear with everybody, we're basically taking the same vote again, and there's a dog, adorable. We're going to take the same vote again. So if you voted yes already, vote yes again, if you desire. All right, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
This is a roll call vote, basically on item number fifty-four, now that it is reconsideration of this item is before this council. Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen. Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, ten counselors have voted in favor of item number fifty-four, which was reconsidered by his council. That item remains ordained.
Very good. All right, it's eleven o'clock, and we're about halfway through the agenda. Just keep that in mind, if anybody needs to make more speeches tonight. Or I should ask, does anybody need a restroom break before we proceed? Hearing no.
My, to say thank you to my colleagues.
Counselor Mbah?
I say my restroom break is to say thank you to my colleagues.
Very good, thank you, Counselor Mbah, and thank you, everyone. Next item.
Item number twenty-six is a report of the Committee on Licenses and Permits, which met on December ninth.
Counselor White.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met on December ninth with myself presiding and Members Mbah and Scott in attendance. We met, we deliberated, and we voted. The details are set out in the committee report, and I would ask that the committee report be accepted as submitted.
That was beautiful. Any discussion on the committee report? Hearing none, the committee report is laid on the table for approval. Next item.
Item number twenty-seven is a report of the Committee on Public Utilities and Public Works, which met on December one.
Counselor Klingon.
Mr. President, we, yeah, we met on December one. All, all members are present. We had folks from the mayor's office, Brian Postaway from engineering, Jessica Foster from engineering. The clerk, John Long, was in attendance, as well as Nick and Tinefica. Several members from EverSource, Elizabeth Toner, Joe D'Agostino, basically seven people from EverSource. We got them out here, talk about seven twenty-one, Summerwell Avenue, which is, we, we covered many things in this agenda, but I want to just focus real quickly on, on seven twenty-one, Summerwell Avenue. That was the bulk of it. They, they have been out there, they have been monitoring, monitoring the leak. It has, hasn't grown in their opinion, but, you know, we, we still have a problem with, with planting trees. Got to the point where, I mean, Counselor White said he was going to speak to the city solicitor about filing action with DPU. They, they agreed to give us a report on the, the leak report on this particular area, but also we asked for a city leak report, and, you know, we have a, we had a good, good conversation with EverSource, and I think we're going to continue to have that, that conversation, hopefully we can get these leak reports. That's, that's, that's the bulk of it, and I ask that this committee report be accepted.
Counselor Klingon moves to accept the committee report as submitted. Any discussion? Seeing none, the committee report is laid on the table for approval.
Item number twenty-eight is a report of the Committee on Traffic and Parking, which met on December seventh.
Counselor Niedergang.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselors Ballantyne, Klingon, and myself were present. We focused, the agenda focused on three things, the Holland Street and College Avenue mobility improvements, dangerous intersections and roadways, and potential solutions to traffic dangers. The committee began the first section of the meeting by sponsoring Counselor Davis to join us to discuss the many traffic calming issues and problems in the College Avenue area, since those are in his Ward six. We talked about a bunch of different problems on different streets around College Avenue, including Kidder Hall, Morrison, and Francesca. We also discussed with Counselor Ballantyne in the lead, the dreadful intersection at Holland Street and Cameron Avenue in Ward seven. Two days later, just last night, actually, the third community meeting on the Holland and College Streetscape Improvement Project took place, and the presentation was excellent. If you're interested in that, I encourage you to look at it on the city website. Although that meeting on College and Holland had been advertised as a discussion of the, quote, "proposed final design," mobility department staff made it clear at both the Traffic and Parking Committee meeting and last night's community meeting that they are still considering changes, and that feedback from the community on this plan will still be considered. The second part of the discussion focused on a number of the most dangerous intersections around the city, Powderhouse Circle, Willow Element Beach Streets at the Cambridge Line, and the Mystic Avenue McGrath Highway and I ninety-three on-ramp area, where two pedestrians were killed last year. Counselor Klingon weighed in on another problem in Ward four, which has not been adequately addressed on Temple Street, but said that progress is being made in the Mystic and McGrath area. We didn't have time for most of the third section of the agenda, potential solutions to traffic dangers, except for a discussion with DPW Commissioner Steve McEckern about training of city staff who drive DPW trucks and vehicles. It was good to hear that DPW takes driver training seriously and has plans to improve and enhance it next year. Of some concern to me is that it is not clear what is in place, or who is responsible to train city staff who drive city vehicles and other departments such as sewer and water, engineering, inspectional services, et cetera, and we will pursue that in future meetings. I anticipate that the orders on other potential solutions to traffic dangers will be a centerpiece of the first Traffic and Parking Committee meeting next year, hopefully in January. It's my intention to have meetings of this committee every month next year. So with that, I ask that this report be approved as presented. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Niedergang rules to submit the committee report as, except the committee report as submitted. Any discussion? Seeing none, this item will be laid on the table for approval.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number thirty, which is a request of the mayor, requesting the appropriation of one hundred and forty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars from the receipts reserved insurance reimbursement account to the DPW Highway Capital Vehicle Account to replace a bucket truck that caught fire two years ago.
This item will be referred to finance. Counselor Scott, any of these items need approval, or can we refer them all to finance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I would move certain ones of these, one moment, my window disappeared on me here. I have way too many IQM windows open right now, sir.
No worries, we can read the next item if you like.
Item thirty-one is a request, the mayor requests the transfer of ninety-nine hundred dollars in the Sewer Enterprise Fund from its Sewer Repairs account to its Judgments and Settlements account to settle a pending claim.
Thank you, Mr. President, both of these items are on our agenda for the Monday meeting, so I'd ask that they be sent to finance.
All right, committee referred to committee of finance.
Item thirty-two is a request, the mayor requesting acceptance.
Go ahead.
Requesting acceptance of a fifty-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollar grant with no new match required from the Metropolitan Planning Council to the Office of Sustainability and Environment for a Climate Change Heat Resilience Project.
Mr. President, this be approved tonight?
Okay, let's lay this on the table for approval.
Item number thirty-three, I request the waive the reading and send to committee.
Counselor Scott moves to waive the reading, refer to the committee of finance.
Items thirty-four through thirty-six have already been approved.
Yep, okay, and how about, go ahead.
Thirty-seven and thirty-eight are time only extensions for the Summerlab Utility and Streetscape Improvements Project, I would ask that they be approved this evening.
All right, Counselor Scott moves to waive the readings and move for approval, seeing no discussion, slay the items on the table for approval.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Item thirty-nine is a request of the mayor, questioning conveying the appointment of Nancy Messias Smith as the mayor is designated to the Wage Theft Environment Committee.
This item is laid on the table and placed on file. Counselor White?
Yes, Mr. President, I move to waive the readings of items forty through forty-three, ask that they all be approved, as I've been assured everything is in order.
All right, any discussion?
Mr. President, on the previous, on the previous item that you placed on file, that should also go to Confirmation of Appointments where the others are sitting, they will soon be interviewed.
Okay, I see it, my note says placed on file, Mr. Clerk, is this an item that the Confirmation of Appointments Committee approves?
Mr. President, the Confirmation of Appointments Committee could certainly, it could be directed there, but the mayor is entitled to an appointment, which does not require the approval of the Confirmation of Appointments Committee.
Okay, Counselor, is that what you still wanted, prefer?
Well, that is true, I guess as long as the clerk will keep this in order, because Counselor Strezzo and Klingon will soon be interviewing the other candidates. And then just remind you, Mr. President, we still have one appointment that needs to come from the council.
Okay, how about we lay this on the table, place on file, with a copy sent to Confirmation of Appointments?
That way we can keep everything looped together, thank you, sir.
And Counselor Klingon?
That's okay, Mr. President, I was just, well, I was just going to say that we have already interviewed six of the proposed candidates for the Wage Theft Advisory Committee, so we're working our way through, we have a couple more to go, but we, you know, we wait for the council suggestion, the president's suggestion, and we should be through with these, so thank you.
Okay, laid on the table, placed on file, copy sent to confirmations. And Counselor White moves, go ahead, what was your motion again, Counselor White?
The clerk has scrolled through, whatever the orders were, I would waive them and ask that they be approved this evening, the four, or license and permits, because I don't have the agenda, here we are.
Counselor White.
Forty-three, ask that they be waived and approved this evening.
All right, seeing no discussion, the items are laid on the table for approval.
Item number forty-four is an order submitted by Counselor Scott that the Commissioner of Public Works install a City Line sign on Norfolk Street, the Cambridge City Line.
Counselor Scott?
I just, I'd ask that both of these items, they don't need to go to a committee, just simply they be approved tonight, and that the clerk make sure the copies go to both Director and Frey, and to Commissioner McEckern, and anybody else relevant, to be honest with you, because I have a hard time finding the right person to authorize signs to get put up. In this case, these are both related to parking issues near the city line, just like to get some signs, thanks.
All right, this item is laid on the table for approval, with a copy sent to Traffic and Parking, DPW, and anyone else who might care.
Very good, item number forty-six is a resolution submitted by Counselor Niedergang and Counselor Davis that the mayor appear before this council at its December seventeen two thousand twenty meeting to update the council on the status of school buildings and when they will be ready for in-person learning.
Counselor Niedergang?
Thank you, Mr. President, you talked on this item previously, so I won't say anything further, just that I'd like it to be laid on the table and put under unfinished business for next week's meeting.
All right, yeah, that's a good idea, Counselor Ballantyne would like to sign on, and we'll lay this on the table with no vote taken.
Item forty-seven is a resolution submitted by Counselor Niedergang, Counselor Davis.
Sorry about that, this is very anal, but do we, should we approve that, so that we officially have requested that he appear?
Certainly can, and it will still appear as unfinished business until the matter has been dealt with. It's, the practice of the council has been to not require acceptance, and the understanding from all parties invited to appear has been that they will appear, but if you want to move approval, we certainly could do that.
Okay, well, we'll keep it as is, lay on the table, no vote taken.
Very good, so forty-seven was similar, it's a resolution submitted by Counselor Niedergang and Davis that the mayor appear before this council at its next meeting, December seventeenth, to update the council regarding COVID-nineteen restrictions and policies in light of the increased spread of the virus.
All right, Counselor Ballantyne would like to sign on, any discussion?
Too many people, too many people talking. Normally this would go to public health and public safety, do I have the floor, Mr. President?
You have the floor.
Normally this would go to public health and public safety, and perhaps Counselor Davis and I didn't talk over strategy on this, and perhaps, perhaps that might be appropriate, but my thinking was that if the mayor is going to appear before us to talk with us about the schools, we might as well also get an update from him on things like, are restaurants going to be closed, are other things, are openings going to be rolled back, which there's been a lot of speculation about, so it occurred to me that while we have the mayor before us, we might get the most current information that's available at the same time. Thank you.
No objection here, Mr. President, that sounds good to me.
Very good, and considering he will be, they will be appearing to make COVID-nineteen funding requests, I believe this would be appropriate, so we'll lay this item on the table with no vote taken.
That brings us to item number forty-eight, which is a communication of the mayor.
Counselor Mbah?
Yes, I just wanted to remind you that I said I wanted to sign, you know, on item forty-six, I wrote in the chat, you know, and since I didn't hear that, I just wanted to add forty-seven.
Counselor Mbah would like to sign on to items forty-six and forty-seven.
Thank you.
Very good, item number forty-eight is a communication from the mayor communicating a notice of withdrawal of previously submitted surveillance technology impact reports.
All right, this item is laid on the table, placed on file, with a copy sent to Legislative Matters.
Item number forty-nine is a request of the mayor.
Forty-six and forty-seven as well. The whole council would like to sign on to item forty-six and forty-seven.
Very good. Item number forty-nine is a request of the mayor, requesting approval of the Surveillance Technology Impact Report for nine-one-one.
This item will be referred to Legislative Matters.
And item fifty is a request of the mayor, requesting approval of Surveillance Technology Impact Report for ShotSpotter.
This item will refer to Legislative Matters.
Item fifty-one is a request, the mayor requesting confirmation of the appointment of Callan Scott to the Urban Forestry Committee.
This item referred to Confirmation of Appointments.
Fifty-two is a request, the mayor requesting confirmation of the appointment of Leah Grossman to the Urban Forestry Committee.
This item referred to Confirmation of Appointments.
Item fifty-five is a communication of the city solicitor requesting approval to settle a claim in connection with expenses incurred by the owner of eighty Irving Street.
This item will be referred to Finance.
And finally, item fifty-six is a communication from the DPW Commissioner responding to a board item with regard to fleet division invoices.
This item will be placed on file, laid on the table, placed on file, with a copy sent to Finance. Do we have any late items, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, strangely enough, we don't.
Counselor Rosetti said she has a late item.
Mr. President, thank you, through you to clerk on, my apologies, John, I thought this email went to you as well, and I guess it didn't, so I would like to submit that we do have a request by the Chamber of Commerce as it relates to the Wage Theft Ordinance Committee, they would like their representative to be Andrew Lynn Esquire from the Mass Attorney, his business address is four-eleven Highland Avenue. I also have Attorney Lynn's resume, I will submit the email from the Executive Director of the Chamber, Steve Mackey, and the resume of Mr. Lynn to the clerk, so that this item could then be referred also to Confirmation of Appointments, please.
Okay, so this is a communication from Counselor Rosetti, conveying the Chamber of Commerce appointment of, what's the name again?
To the Wage Theft Ordinance, to the Wage Theft Committee, Wage Theft Committee, excuse me.
What's the person's name?
Andrew Lynn Esquire.
Andrew Lynn Esquire to the Wage Theft Committee, you got that, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President, I will, I think it might make the most sense for me to accept Counselor Rosetti's conveyance of that item and report it as a late item from the Chamber of Commerce nominating that individual to the Wage Theft Advisory Committee, and still, and still be referred to the Committee on Confirmation of Appointments.
What John said, any further discussion? Seeing none, this item will be referred to Confirmation of Appointments.
Very good.
All right, we still got about forty-something minutes before midnight, anybody want to talk about anything? No? Okay, let's do a roll call vote on all items remaining on the table.
Mr. President, this is a roll call vote on the motion to approve agenda items three through seventeen, nineteen and twenty, twenty-three, twenty-six through twenty-eight, thirty-two, thirty-seven and thirty-eight, and forty through forty-five, and Counselor Rosetti's late item, and also to place on file items twenty-one, thirty-nine, forty-eight, and fifty-six, and the planning board's late communication.
All right, please call the roll.
On that motion, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan. Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, with ten counselors in favor, one absent, that motion has been approved.
All right, seeing no items before us, Counselor Scott moves to adjourn, please call the roll on adjournment.
On adjournment, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan. Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, ten counselors have voted in favor of adjourning, one is absent, that motion has been approved.
All right, good night, everybody, see you next week.